Good morning, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order, the April 8th San Bernardino County Board of Supervisors meeting, and we'll kick it off with the Pledge of Allegiance by Supervisor Curl.
Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just as one.
Thank you. Can I entertain a motion to approve the acknowledged certificate of posting, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimously approved. That moves us to E, which is Board Announcements and Committee Updates. Do we have a board announcements, Supervisor Setello? Zenger? I have just a few. Met with Governor Newsom's liaisons for the region last week, had an opportunity to express some of our priorities to the governor's office, including issues with homelessness, environmental regulations, particularly with Highway 25 and the regional park, some issues we're having there, housing mandates, of course, and tourism and our goal to promote Pinnacle's National Park. And then had a very, thank you to the Rotary San Juan Batista, had an opportunity to meet with them last week, usually do that on an annual basis, and was another good opportunity to run down many of the key issues that we're dealing with here at the county, particularly those that are relevant to San Juan, like some of the roads around there, the sheriff's services, the planning area, MOU that's coming before us, and then, of course, the fire protection issue. And then also had a good opportunity to sit down with San Juan's interim city manager, Ashley Colick, last week as well, had a very productive meeting on basically many of the same issues as Rotary. That's all I have today. Supervisor Zenger, or Velazquez?
Nothing, sir.
And Supervisor Curl.
I don't have anything. Are we considering pulling 1.3 or 1.4 for National Library Week or the National Children, Child Abuse Awareness Proclamations? If we aren't, I just want to recognize that it is National Library Week, April 6 through the 12th, and the month of April is National Childhood Abuse Awareness. I just want to thank everyone for their support in both those areas.
And we can certainly pull whichever items supervisors would like to have, so that would be great.
I'm kind of going with the will of the board that we are not doing presentations.
Sure, sure. Okay, great. We'll get to that in just a moment, but first, before that, public comment, do we have any general public comment for items that are not on the agenda?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And in chambers, we'll start with Olivia Towinkle. No, this... Oh, so, okay, can you put the item number that you're gonna talk about on there? Mia Casey? Just general public comment, not on the agenda?
So, I'm here today because I want to talk about the dangerous use of political rhetoric and distorted information and a real lack of accountability that the community has been witnessing lately. You know, recently, two supervisors have repeatedly made false, misleading claims, not just about officials and cities, but our firefighters, and have even attacked and been dismissive of the very constituents that you're supposed to represent. This behavior is just not acceptable. Chair Cosmiki, you recently made comments about attacking San Juan Batista, Hollister, and especially our firefighters, and I feel that they were unprofessional and irresponsible. I feel that there were misrepresentations regarding firefighter pay by citing total compensation numbers from Transparent California, which aren't just about pay and overtime, but also include things like benefits and pensions. This kind of misinformation is harmful, as many people trust what you say as an elected official. At last night's Hollister City Council meeting, I saw the direct consequences of your words. An elderly woman not only exaggerated that skewed information about firefighter pay, she then proceeded to turn around and scream and disrespect the firefighters in the room, asking them why they were even there, and accusing them of standing around and being paid for doing nothing. Watching this was deeply troubling. It was your rhetoric that sparked that disgraceful behavior. I also just want to make it clear that one of those firefighters whose pay you pointed at, who had worked a great deal of overtime, had been recently hospitalized after suffering a stroke, and he may never work again. Words have power, and words that have been used by two supervisors recently have really hurt our community. It's time to take responsibility for the impact they've had, and I'd say this board could really consider using a code of conduct and ethics. Thank you.
Next in chambers, Sue Logue.
Nice to be here, nice to see you all. Susan Logue, I'm a Hollister resident, also a member of the Friends of the San Bernardino County Free Library, and we are hoping today to recognize the library by a proclamation that the library director has brought with him, and we're hoping maybe for time for a picture and to be able to do that publicly again.
It's on consent, so certainly we can pull that from consent. I'd be glad to do that.
Oh, okay, that would be awesome, thank you. And also just looking forward to the new library expansion. In 2027, we should have a new library, which is very exciting, and we hope to continue to work with the Board of Supervisors and make that dream come true. I think we're at the point of a design and build portion of the new library expansion, so we're looking forward to hearing about that and having a new library for our community. And thanks to the library staff for all they've done in the outreach, and I'm sure Austin, who's the director, will be able to tell you more about that, so, thank you.
Next in chambers would be Elia.
Good morning, Ms. Chair and supervisors. I would like specifically Supervisor Cosmiki, Supervisor Velazquez, and Supervisor Zenger to listen to me specifically, to show you how it's done. At the last meeting, I made an error, and I said that the district attorney's office had 17 attorneys. They have seven district attorneys. I made a mistake, and I am acknowledging the mistake, and it's really easy to do, so I would encourage you to learn how to do it, because that is exactly what you do every time you're out there in public, you're giving out misinformation so that it suits your agenda. After I sit down, I'm gonna hear and say, oh, that's her again, you know, she's always giving out misinformation, and she's a liar, and she's this, and she's that. I do not come up here and I do not intentionally make any statement that is not true. However, it is very easy for you all to do it, and you get away with it, and it's unbelievable how many people follow you and actually believe the lies that you say, and you are flippantly disrespectful to the firefighters to say that you're not going to negotiate because they're getting paid too much and that a firefighter's life is not, has no value to you. There is a standard for two in and two out, because history has shown when it has been less, we have lost firefighters. These are the individuals that go out there to a home to help lift somebody because they've fallen down and they can't pick them up, the person that's in the house. They go to car accidents and they see brain matter. They go into a fire and they don't hesitate because that is the responsibility that they taken on as a firefighter. But you sit there and you disrespect and you think that because you say something that it is true, and it is not. Is a firefighter's life worth it for you to continue with your rhetoric that you're the only one that's right and the cities are incorrect? Is it your agenda to continue to just go out there and disrespect and lie to the entire community because only you, and only you three, believe that you have the answer and that only you three can help this community? And it is not true, and you need to listen to the community, what they're telling you, because you're putting people's lives at risk.
Next in chamber would be Austin Curtis.
Thank you to the board, county admin, county staff, and community members. Austin Curtis, county librarian, and I'd like to talk a little bit about National Library Week. So each April...
Hey, Austin, this is on consent agenda, so we'll have to hold off to, yeah, to discuss that on consent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Appreciate it.
In chambers for general public comment, not on the agenda, Joe?
I just want to tell you a quick story about the lightning siege of 2020. It's actually not the first time that we've had a lightning siege. I've actually looked it up plenty, not too long ago. You see phrases like lightning barrage and lightning siege described for prolific lightning events of 1987, 1999, 2008, and most recently 2020. The reason why I bring that up, that bring up that this has happened on more than one occasion is to let you know that there is a, this is something that happens every once in a while. Between 87 to 99, that's 12 years, 99 to 2008, that's nine years, 08 to 20, that's 12 years. So these things happen every once in a while, and they happen for a very interesting reason, which is that dry air, the dry air that comes off the Great Basin in the summer and late fall, that dry air, you know, it pushes into our, into our territory, that's how we get the offshore winds. And at the same time, though, the South, sorry, the Central Pacific area is having its hurricane season. And so what's interesting about this is that these air masses, every once in a while, come into conflict with each other, and sometimes both encroach on our territory, that's how we get those nice, beautiful clouds, and sometimes in the summertime, especially like around August or fall or September, is because that air, the moist air, believe it or not, actually, because humid, humid air does feel, kind of feel heavier when you go outside, you know, it's all muggy, it feels heavier, but actually, it is actually, in fact, a lighter air mass than dry air. I believe, I believe water expands to about 1,000 times its volume upon evaporation versus while water is about 800, is about, air is only about 800 times as dense as liquid water, so you do the math, and it comes out that moist air is in fact lighter than dry air. When this air is advected up north, that is to be pushed sideways up, up north, it is forced to rise over the dry air, and as it does so, it is, that advection becomes convection in some ways. This creates an interesting situation where that, those clouds are now hanging over the sky, and there's a lot of dry, dry air underneath them. In 2020, there was a low pressure zone that had moved towards Northern California and had brought the jet stream from the remnants of, had brought the jet stream in alignment, to alignment with the, with the moisture plume from the former hurricane Faust. What's interesting about this is that this created a situation where now you had cold air and dry air going underneath, being forced to interact with each other. Cold air does not like to be underneath, sorry, cold air does not like to be forced upwards, dry air does not like to be, does not like to be forced upwards, and somehow it is. And what this does is this created a prolific lightning event with, and the dry air underneath allowed the water to evaporate before it hit the ground, and this is probably gonna happen again before the decade is out. Thank you.
That concludes public comment for general.
Thank you very much. That would take us to our consent agenda. So we'll start off, is there anyone that would like to pull any items from consent? Supervisor Setello?
I'd like to pull item 1.7, please, which is the Arts Council presentation.
Zenger? I'll do 1.3 and 1.4. We have another, other presentations here and some folks in the audience, so 1.3 and 1.4. Supervisor Velazquez? Supervisor Curl? Great. So that would allow us to go to public comment for consent, please.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And in chambers, we will start with Olivia Towinkle.
I would like to take a moment to express my gratitude to the Board of Supervisors for recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. As co-chair for the Child Abuse Prevention Council and also program manager for CASA, this is very near and dear to my heart, so we are deeply honored to stand before you today, and thank you again. We want to also invite you to recognize our unsung heroes of this year on April 17th at the Veterans Hall, where we're gonna be recognizing many people's efforts in preventing child abuse. Thank you.
Next in chambers, Austin Curtis.
So thank you to the board, the county admin, county staff, and community members. Each April, we celebrate National Library Week as a way to recognize the essential role that libraries play in strengthening communities. This year's theme is Drawn to the Library, and it highlights how libraries are serving as welcoming community hubs, drawing people in and connecting them through programs, resources, and services. From our storytimes and book clubs to our knitting group and summer reading program, our library offers opportunities for learning, connection, and engagement, and we invite everyone to stop by, sign up for a free library card, and pick up a calendar of events happening throughout April. Thank you.
Next in chambers, Elia Salinas.
Item 1.8, adopt electric vehicle charging policy to allow fleet vehicles charging and employee-paid charging only. So we, the, the goal is for the state of California to eventually go green and go all these vehicles, and it's, it's kind of disappointing that, you know, we have citizens here that have electric vehicles, and they're trying to do the right thing, and now you're going to charge them to come here and charge their vehicles. It says employee-paid charging only. So I think the public should be allowed to do it. This is a public building, and the only way that you have anything here is because of public funds. So why would you take that public service away from the public that's paying for it? And it's my understanding also that you also want to charge employees to charge? Shouldn't it be a benefit for employees that have electric vehicles to also be able to charge their vehicles without, without any cost? That was spoken before, and I did not open the attachment to this, so I don't know if that to be true or not, but it is my understanding that you also wanted to charge employees. So, that being said, I don't think that you should be charging anybody because you are doing it with public funds, and if it weren't for the public paying their taxes, you wouldn't have this. And this was done through a grant, and shame on the county who failed to continue to do this so that you wouldn't have to pay for it. So now, because there was an error within the county, I don't know who was watching over that, but we know who the CAO was, and there's a lot of errors that are happening that are being brought up, they're not happening, they're coming to the forefront, and it's all based on the previous CAO, and then what you're trying to do is you're trying to then correct it and then go ahead and say, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna charge for this, don't worry that it was a mistake, that our staff didn't take care of it by getting another grant. So let's look within before you look out and try to charge the public instead of something that should have been taken care of by staff. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the items that were pulled. So moved.
I'll second.
First, we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Consent approved, with the exception of those items. That would take us to 1.3, which is Approved Proclamation Declaring April 6 to the 12th as National Library Week in San Bernardino County. Can I please entertain a motion to approve the proclamation?
So moved.
We have a first, do we have a second?
Second.
First and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, and if folks from the library group would like to come up, we'd certainly say a few words and hand up the proclamation. Austin, good to see you. All right. Susan, would you like to come up, or anyone else with the Friends group? Yeah, of course. Yeah, so first of all, if you haven't met Austin, our new librarian, doing a fantastic job here at the San Bernardino County Free Library, and of course, we're in a transition working toward expanding the library with our staff and our board, and of course, the Friends, the library group, which is instrumental, and we wouldn't be able to do this without you, so thank you for all that you do. But here today, we're here to celebrate National Library Week, and, and I think there was a little bit said earlier, but I'll go ahead and read some of the proclamation here. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that foster lifelong learning, offering a space where individuals of all ages can explore new ideas, and whereas libraries provide free and equitable access to books, digital tools, and innovative programming and ensuring, ensuring that all individuals have support they need to learn, connect, and thrive, and whereas libraries empower job seekers, entrepreneurs, and lifelong learners by providing access to resources, training, and opportunities that support career growth and economic success, and whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, credibility, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status, and whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, standing as champions of intellectual freedom and free expression, libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. So now therefore be proclaimed, the San Bernardino County Board proclaim April 6 to the 12th as National Library Week. We encourage all residents to connect with San Bernardino County Free Library by, by visiting online or in person to access the invaluable resources and services at the library. So again, thank you very much for all you do, and would anyone like to speak?
Thank you again, and just, you know, we'll have activities throughout the week, so come visit us, sign up for a library card, and, you know, visit us on our website, social media to see all the events we're planning now and in the future. Thank you.
Take a picture?
Yeah, picture would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, move on, he's come back here.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That would take us to 1.4, which is Approved Proclamation Recognizing the Month of April as Child Abuse, National Child Abuse Awareness Month in San Bernardino County. Can I please entertain a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
First, we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously, and I think we have some folks here as well for that, if you'd like to come on up. Thank you all for being here, really appreciate it, and I think anybody, you know, really anybody understands the importance of preventing child abuse. There's really nothing more important than doing so in our society, and I think it goes without saying that the work you all do is invaluable, and as anybody who has children or really anybody understands that, and as somebody with a three-year-old and a 16-year-old, I certainly do, and, and so thank you so much for recognizing this month and for all your work. And so in the matter of proclamation recognizing April 2025 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month, whereas the National Child Awareness Month recognizes the importance of families and communities working together to prevent child abuse and neglect. Prevention services and supports developed by this collaboration can help to protect children and strengthen families. Whereas in 2024, the Child Protective Services Division of the San Bernardino County HHS Agency investigated 213 reports from concerned citizens involving the safety of children in San Bernardino County. of children in San Bernardino County. Whereas our children are our most valuable resource and will shape the future of the state of California and County of San Bernardino. Whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. Whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. Whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. Whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and our families. Now therefore, the San Bernardino County Board does hereby proclaim April 2025 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in San Bernardino County and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for children and families. So thank you again very much for being here. And if you'd like to say a few words, certainly welcome that as well.
I just want to thank you again and invite you again on April 17th to our Unsung Hero event. It's our third annual one, and it's always a really good time and brings a lot of warmth to everyone's hearts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
One more, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Can you get closer?
You want to come a little closer? You're fine, no rush. Thank you. Thank you very much. That would take us to 1.7, which is Accept Informational Presentation from San Bernardino Arts Council's Executive Director, Jennifer Lane, Highlighting Art Program Services and Opportunities and Adopt the Resolution Appointing San Bernardino Arts Council as the state local partner for the California Arts Council and Approve Proclamation Declaring April 2025 as Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month in San Bernardino County. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. And Jennifer Lane is here. If you'd like to go through. Do we have the slide available by chance? And then after the presentation, we'll present the proclamation as well.
Can I use these?
I don't think so.
No? Okay, okay. Okay, good morning. Thank you Chair Cosmicke and members of the Board for having us here today. I'm Jennifer Lane, Executive Director of the San Bernardino County Arts Council. And every year, we are happy to come to you here in April with a brief report on sort of the state of the arts in the county. Our organization, the San Bernardino County Arts Council, serves a very important role as a state local partner to the California Arts Council, which is our state arts agency. And serving that local role here really to support and foster and provide a lot of direct programs and services and then also bring much-needed resources to our county. So I'll explain a little bit about that. So our mission at the San Bernardino County Arts Council is to activate and engage people, communities, and spaces through arts, culture, and creativity. And I'll share a few highlights from our programs. I know you all, I know that you're familiar with our work. We do a lot of great things. And I'm happy to share some highlights from our programs. First, a little bit about the state local partner program. This was established by the first term of Governor Brown back in 1980. It's a network of local arts agencies that serve the entire county throughout California. So there are 58 counties in California. There are currently 54 state local partners. And there's an effort to establish SLPs, as we call them, in the four remaining counties. Most of us, believe it or not, are independent nonprofits, particularly in the smaller and medium-sized counties. And then in the large urban areas like San Diego, San Francisco, Sacramento, they're government agencies. We also have more small to medium-sized budgets and do a lot of really great things. So our mission via the state is to strengthen arts, culture, and creative expression as the tools to cultivate a better California for all. And we do this at the local level. Some of the ways that we do this is through funding, through grant-making and re-granting, connecting artists, community leaders, and changemakers to exchange ideas, network, and support one another through advocacy. We support arts education, community engagement, and public art through direct programs. And then we're really committed to advancing social justice and equity in all of our programs and practices. These are some of the things kind of more generally that we do here at the local level. We provide a lot of professional development and technical assistance to artists, teaching artists. We do artist roundtables, connecting artists and arts organizations and partners. We have our own grant program, which I'll share a few details on momentarily. We do public art, as you know. We have done the utility boxes in the town, a couple of the Clean California projects that I'm sure you're familiar with. And our biggest program by far is arts education, which I'll highlight. Because we bring these resources in through really aggressive grant-making, we apply to a lot of private and public funders to bring those resources to our community, we are able to provide these programs and services cost-free for the majority of the work that we do. More than 90% of all of our programs and services are free of charge. So I'd like to highlight sort of one of our key programs, our Artists in the Schools program. This is something that we've built up over years and years through direct partnerships with the schools and school districts. We have our fabulous Director of Arts Education here, Amanda Quiado. She's been with the Arts Council for 12 years now. So we currently are serving over 6,000 students in 175 art classes per week in the county. So we have a team of teaching artists that are employed by the Arts Council. They're W-2 employees that go out into the field every day teaching these classes. We've been doing this for a number of years, and the students are getting so good that we continue to have to innovate and update our curriculum because the students are really developing amazing skills around mixed media, ceramics, two-dimensional artwork. And I invite you all to come see the outcome of these programs at the County Art Showcase, which is taking place this Thursday at the Veterans Hall in downtown Hollister in collaboration with the County Office of Education. There will be thousands of artworks on display. And I think it's somewhere 80 to 90% of that work is work that is produced through our programs. Also here on the right, it's not just visual art. We also do performing arts as well. This is an image from our ukulele program that takes place in all of the Hollister School District elementary schools. Why do we do this? Why is it important? It's not just that we're trying to produce, you know, all these future professional artists, although we would love that too. But arts education, exposure to arts education really prepares students for future success in life. It's correlated with higher academic performance. It's correlated with more engagement and confidence at school. So we're really trying to build those base skills so that they do go off to college, come back to the community, and they're our future entrepreneurs, teachers, and elected officials. Here, I'm happy to share two images from a most recent program, the California Poetry Out Loud program. This is Andrea Espino Sanchez that won a local Poetry Out Loud competition for the county. And then she had the opportunity to travel to Sacramento in March and compete at the state level. It's a really great opportunity. It's a national program. Actually, the California champion then goes to Washington DC and competes. And this is one of the things that we do for the state of California here at the local level. And it's just such a great opportunity for local high school students. We also, like I mentioned, fund local artists and arts organizations through our Arts Express Grant Program. This started with a tiny bit of seed money from Corbin several years ago. It was like $3,000. And we gave out these micro grants. Over the last two-ish years, we have distributed close to $200,000 in local arts funding. So that's just coming to us. We're putting it out through grant programs. Here are some images from our grantees. This is an image of Sandra Areche from San Juan Batista through her Dia de los Muertos celebration at the cemetery there. There's a mariachi group that we have funded and the Hollister High School Band. And we also fund non arts organizations that want to do arts work. So this may include like the Food Bank and other nonprofits. Finally, we really believe that arts and culture is a tool to bring the community together to improve and impact quality of life and livability in San Bernardino County. So here are some images from, on the left, on, yes, your left, is an image from Culture Through the Lens exhibition that was not only an art exhibition, but a car show. Hundreds of folks came out to celebrate car culture. Julian Torres, our program assistant, was instrumental in coordinating that program. He's a big car guy, too. Also, we have Venencia Prudencio. I'm going to invite her up just to say a few words from an artist's perspective. She is a teaching artist and a muralist, visual artist with the San Bernardino County Arts Council, and also does a lot of independent work. And last year, she served as the Creative Core Artist with San Bernardino County Elections. So I'm going to have her say a few words on that.
Hi there. I'm Venencia. I'm a local artist. I've been a teaching artist for a number of years now. And I had the opportunity to serve as a Creative Core Artist with the Elections Department, and that included outreach. We did a series of comics that were educational to educate the public about the elections process. And ultimately, at the very end, we hosted an I Voted sticker design competition, which one of my sixth graders luckily won, and that sticker was distributed to voters throughout the county. Thank you.
So a little, just a tiny bit about the California Creative Core Program. This was a statewide program. I believe it was funded to the tune of about 60 million. It was a two-year pilot. And really, the intention was to get artists back to work after the pandemic and to use artists as trusted community leaders to advance understanding and activities around public health, civic engagement, so that was the elections, social justice, and climate impact. We had two funded projects here, and we collaborated with a six-county regional team to do all that work on the Central Coast. We will be going to Sacramento in April, advocating in part for reinvestment in the California Creative Core Program just because it was such a positive experience and had such a tremendous impact on the entire state. Okay. I also just want to share that, you know, part of our role as a state local partner is to be that local conduit for when things do come down from the regional level or the state level. So we were really pleased to partner with Caltrans on these two Clean California Highway Beautification projects. I know I've been here before talking about the big mural in San Juan Batista. This one, the Woven Project on the corner of Meridian and 25, was just completed really right after the holidays. It's been up for a while. The sculpture's been up for a while, but we finally got the illumination connected right around the holidays. So if you drive by in the evening, you'll see the sculpture illuminated. The light patterns, which are very subtle, are impacted by the various weather patterns. And we think this is important, and Americans think this is important because they think that public art particularly can improve the beauty of a community and really help build community identity and vision. And some of these statistics here, little data points, are taken from Americans for the Arts. They just completed Arts and Economic Prosperity Report. And you can find all this data here on that report. Another new, and I'm getting close to the end of the presentation. Another new thing that we're working on is workforce development, particularly for, you know, aspiring art teachers in the visual and performing arts. So you may have heard of the California Jobs First Initiative. This is a workforce development initiative all across California. We are so happy to be a recipient of that here in San Bernardino County. We're working in a tri-county region, including the Arts Councils in Monterey and Santa Cruz County, also with the community colleges and with CSU Monterey Bay to figure out these pathways of how we can get credentialed art teachers coming up within the community, going to the local high schools, community college, four-year, and coming back in the community to teach. There, just a tiny bit of background. Prop 28 was passed in November 2022, and it sets aside almost $1 billion a year for arts education throughout the state of California. That is money that's going directly to our local school districts. And 80% of that funding has to be used to hire credentialed art teachers. It was never really a viable career to become an art teacher because there was no funding. But now, California and local school districts, we have the funding, and there's a mandate to provide this education to our students. So we're here to figure it out. Like, how are we going to quickly get these folks credentialed, qualified, to get these good jobs, good salary jobs with benefits? And keep it local. So we're partnering with Uplift. These are some folks. So finally, we are here, we're here in April because April is Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month across California. It's an important time just to celebrate local artists and creatives. You know, we are so fortunate to live in this region with El Teatro Campusino, Aromas Hills Artisans, just a vibrant Latinx art scene with, you know, muralists, filmmakers, tattoo artists, car culture. So, you know, and just not only to highlight the vibrancy and the beauty that art and culture brings, but really the economic output. We have generated over $12 million in arts funding for our county over the last decade. And that has this ripple effect of direct and indirect economic benefit. We are creating good jobs, We are creating good jobs, and we just feel that's very important to our community. So I just want to thank you for receiving this report today and let you know that we're very honored to partner with the county and continue to do this good work. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. Much appreciated. And now we'll do the proclamation.
Okay, great.
I guess first of all, is there any questions before I get to that? Any questions, comments from the board? Or is this Satella?
I do have one question. Thank you so much for the presentation. What time is your event on Thursday at Vets Hall?
It is four, four to seven.
Four to seven PM. Okay, thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments from the board? No, hearing none. All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, so I don't have to repeat everything Jennifer said, because she covered it really well. You know, arts are obviously really important, and we are in an art, California obviously is an artistic center of the world, and of course, San Benito County, we have a lot to be proud of here. And Arts Council, to me, I always say it, you know, from the programs to the teaching in schools to the public art, the San Benito County Arts Council is, you know, does an excellent job. And we're just really fortunate to have you here and to have you guys kind of pushing these initiatives forward, so much appreciated. And you didn't mention, we actually had a major motion picture filmed in San Juan Batista that's going to be coming out soon starring Leonardo DiCaprio, so. And we've had other films here as well, so. And of course, we have Luis Valdez, and the list goes on and on. So as far as the proclamation goes to celebrate the arts here this month, whereas Arts Culture and Creativity Month of April is the seventh annual statewide celebration, and whereas the San Benito County believes the arts, culture, and creativity are essential to our thriving community, and whereas the benefits of the arts are hope by fostering sense of community and personal fulfillment, inspiring optimism and resilience in the face of challenges, and whereas the benefits of the arts impact the healing by offering therapeutic experiences with, that restore well-being, enhance mental and physical health, and support emotional recovery, whereas California is the fifth-largest economy in the world with the creative economy of approximately $261 billion, representing 8% of the state's GDP and 847,000 jobs in 2022. And whereas San Benito County Arts Council partners with the major state-level art agencies such as California for the Arts, Create California, and California Arts Council, and whereas their collective work at the local and regional level and throughout the state encourages racial equality, uplifts our community, and changes our lives for the better, now therefore be proclaimed on this April 8th. The Board of Supervisors of San Benito County proclaims April 2025 as Arts Culture and Creativity Month and encourages everyone to join in the celebration. So thank you very much. And if you want to say anything further, or you're okay. You said this is good along, it was great. So if you want to take that.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, wait. I was Chair Cosmiki, can you get one?
Yeah.
So that would wrap up consent, and, excuse me, that would take us to the public hearing, item 2.1. This would behold a public hearing, adopt a resolution making sequa findings, finding that the adoption of the proposed ordinance establishing water allotments within CSA 31 Stonegate for 2526 is exempt from sequa. Accept introduction and waive further reading of the proposed ordinance. And Linda, if you'd like to take it away, thank you very much.
Hey, good morning, Board Supervisors, members of the public. My name is Linda Yang, and I am the CSA/CFD Coordinator for the County with Resource Management Agency. We are here today regarding the public hearing to request the approval and adoption of the resolution and ordinance amendment establishing water allotments within the County Service Area 31, which is known as the Stonegate Community. Every year, the San Benito County Water District provides the Stonegate Community with annual water allotment. And so today, we are here to request the approval for the total of 104 acre-feet of water, which is then distributed among the residents in detail under Exhibit C, which breaks it down to 394,000 gallons per resident for ag water and an average of 300 gallons a day for domestic. That's it.
Thank you very much. So from there, we'll hold the public hearing on the proposed water conservation ordinance. We'll open the public hearing. Do we have any comments?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Thank you very much. We'll close the public hearing. We have any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. I would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution making sequa findings, finding the adoption of the proposed ordinance is exempt from sequa. Accept introduction and waive further reading of the proposed ordinance. Adopt ordinance amending water allocation requirements for CSA 31 for 2526 and retroactively approve the publication of a one-quarter-page display ad published prior to today's hearing. Do I have a motion for approval?
So move.
We have a first, we have a second.
I'll second.
First and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Cosmiki?
Yes.
Supervisor Zenger?
Yes.
Supervisor Satello?
Yes.
Supervisor Curro?
Yes.
Supervisor Velazquez?
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion passes.
Thank you very much. That'll take us to our regular agenda. This would be item 3.1, approved certificate of recognition.
Can I make a motion that we move item 3.4 to the top of our regular agenda this morning, just because there's so many people from the public that are here for that item in particular?
We have interest in that. Is there any further interest on the board?
I would, I would support that.
I'm going to tie break and say yes on that. We do have a lot of people here in the audience, so, so yeah, let's do that. We'll move up 3.4 to the top, and then we'll go from there, 3.1, unless there's interest in moving something else. And do we have some folks that were?
I need to check with my attorney to, for our attorney for that item.
Okay, are we okay maybe doing 3.1 and then doing 3.4 so we can move along? If that's okay, I'm hearing yes. So we will move back to 3.1, approved certificate of recognition for the Cesar Chavez Award recipients, Maria Romero, Julio Salazar, and Veronica Lozama. And we have, do we have some, we have some of them here as well? Okay, thank you very much. And Supervisor Satello, I was going to be presenting the certificates. And essentially, Latino Coalition of San Benito County held an event to honor these folks at Cesar Chavez Award recipients on March 29th. And as stated in the agenda, each of these awardees has demonstrated deep commitment to service, leadership, and advocacy in the spirit of Cesar Chavez. And there's a lot in the agenda items, so I would encourage everyone to read about these folks and all that they've done for the community. And just thank you to the Latino Coalition. Thank you to the three well-deserved recipients. And as I said, you can read through their inspiring stories, and it's an honor here at the county to help recognize these individuals. So if you'd like to come up and then sup- Oh, I'm sorry. You're right, I'm getting on at work. So we'll do public comment. We actually have to, I think we have to approve. Let me look really quick here. Yeah, we have to approve the certificates as well. Is there a public comment, please?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Hearing none. We'll bring it back. Does the board have any questions or comments? I'd like to entertain a motion for approval then on the certificates.
I've moved to approve.
We have a first, we have a second.
Second.
First and a second. All those in favor, roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Cosmiki?
Yes.
Supervisor Zenger?
Yes.
Supervisor Satello?
Yes.
Supervisor Curro?
Yes.
Supervisor Velazquez?
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion passes.
Thank you very much. If you all like to come up, and we'll present those certificates. Thank you.
So do we have? Want to come up and join us? So thank you. It's an honor to be able to get, to be up here and present these certificates to you today. As Chair Cosmiki stated, the background on these individuals is really remarkable. I'm actually going to read a little bit, because I don't know how many people of the public will actually go and go into our agenda and read this, but Julio? I'm going to start with you. So Julio Salazar came to the United States at the age of 17, not knowing the language, but tells a story about the warm-hearted people of Hollister that gave him the confidence to serve in his community. His civic involvement began with advocating at school for his children, Julio Jr., Alexa, and Roxanne. Julio's passion for education and student rights resulted in his election as the past president of the Parent Advisory Council for the High Schools Migrant Program. His effort to get more parents involved led to increased meeting attendance. In his first year as president, participation rose to 160 active parents. Following his work as PAC president, Julio also served as the Region One President and State Representative for the Santa Clara County Office of Education Migrant Education Program. Region One includes 34 school districts across the counties of San Benito, Santa Clara, Santa Cruz, San Francisco, San Mateo, and Alameda, serving over 200,000 students. Julio, thank you so much. It is a true honor for me to present the certificate to you for your commitment to service, leadership, and advocacy in the spirit of Cesar Chavez and to the Latino Coalition of San Benito County. And I'll give you an opportunity to say something right after. Okay, Maria Romero. Maria, as the leader of Mobile Ministries, Captain Romero has been a driving force in delivering food, rental, and utility assistance, as well as spiritual care throughout California's coastal valley, from Hollister to Solidad and beyond. Her dedication to farmworker communities is particularly evident in her evening outreach, where she meets laborers after long shifts to provide meals, support, and a listening ear. Through strong partnerships with the Solidad Police Department, Mujeres, Campesinas, and countless local volunteers, Captain Romero has built a trusted network of compassion. Her impact goes beyond underserved. Most recently, under her leadership, the Salvation Army Hollister Corps partnered with the Cesar Chavez Foundation to launch a powerful new initiative focused on empowering migrant workers and supporting the unhoused. As Captain Romero put it, "By reducing barriers to education and providing essential support, we're creating a lasting impact in San Benito County." Whether unloading thousands of pounds of food from the canteen or offering spiritual care at a community center, Captain Romero shows that for people with love and purpose. Her unwavering presence reminds farmworkers that they matter and that they are not alone. Captain Maria Romero embodies servant leadership, tireless, humble, and deeply rooted in the community. She is a true champion for farmworkers and an inspiration to us all. Maria, we present this certificate to you for your commitment to service, leadership, and advocacy in spirit of Cesar Chavez. Thank you for having me do it for this community. Lastly, Veronica Lozama, who is not here today, but was part of our county family, worked for COG for many years. Veronica Lozama was born in Hollister and graduated from Hollister High. She's deeply rooted in the community. She serviced as a daughter of farmworker parents. Her early experiences shaped a lifelong commitment to uplifting others and advocating for justice. Her family's involvement with the United Farmworkers Union instilled in her values of perseverance and equity as she marched alongside iconic labor leaders, Cesar Chavez and Dolores Huerta. A graduate of San Jose State University, Veronica currently serves as the Branch Chief of Regional Planning and Local Development Review for Caltrans, as well as the District Native American Liaison for the California Department of Transportation. In this role, she champions stakeholder collaboration, project development, and initiatives that enhance the transportation system for more resilient communities. For over 30 years, Veronica has engaged in social activism and youth mentorship, empowering the next generation with the knowledge, skills, and confidence to address societal changes. So we will, are you, are you guys going to give this to Veronica, or should we? We'll give it to the Latino Coalition, and they can go ahead and present it to Veronica. But the Latino Coalition had a, an event honoring Cesar Chavez and honoring the work that Captain Romero, Julio, and Julio Salazar and Veronica Lozama did on March 28th. I'm sorry we couldn't be there, but we're really happy to present these certificates to you today. Is there anything that either of you would like to say? Okay.
Good morning. I just want to say thank you to our Creator, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve this community, and especially for the need there is in here and showing that I'm not alone. I know I depend a lot on the people who's donated to us. Sadly, we don't get a lot of donations, but yes, we've been so poor. And I just want to say thank you. Now, the fire department is here to Christmas this community, especially 90% of this community, more than 300 families being served by toys because of them. So I just want to say thank you, you know, for the work that they do to that community as well. So that teach me that I'm not alone, see? And this community is not alone. Thank you for your service, too. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Hi, my name is Julio Salazar, and I, I love to serve. And volunteering is something you feel from here. It's a passion, and you don't need to be paid or doing, you know, something to keep doing. And when I serve our community for the youth, the youth is very difficult to work with them. And when you find that way to do it, you keep going. Almost 30 years serving the youth teach me how to treat my kids. I pushed to go to school. And when I do the community service for migrant families, that take me to serve state level as president, serving over 300,000 families. And my focus is teach the families how the school system works, to learn how to get the kids go to college, go to university. Take those kids from the street and put them in the schools. So it's voluntary. Everything is voluntary, but when you're going to do it, time is the best thing to do it. But thank you for this. And my English is better limit, but my passion for serve has no limits. Thank you.
Appreciate that. We got all the pictures we need on that. Are we okay on that? All right. So if we could, we'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back for our next item, which might take a little while, so thank you.
Recording stopped.
Recording stopped.
That deal collectively. There are still two agreements that are in place, so there would be two amendments. It's not a rewrite of the whole contract. So whatever that dollar amount would be, we would plug into those amendments, bring them forward to you, and then your boards would hear them. And if approved like before, we would bring those back ultimately to the city council for consideration. So also for the San Juan Batista side, we had keeping the lease and the utility language out of their impact fees. We have it to where, to allow for the reimbursement of allowable expenses for both, per both agencies' impact fee studies. And reimbursements would be allowable from the effective dates of the studies through the end of the term. So if new studies were done, then we would move forward from there. Or if it were to be today, whatever the most recent study is. So aligning the expenditures with the impact fee study. Development, review, and inspection fees. So this is similar to what we had brought back before, that the county in San Juan would reimburse the city quarterly for all the fees collected by those agencies for development, review, and inspections per our current fee study. There was the SCR 911 language that was, we had some language in there. And the county had some language where we all talked about at the last meeting. So that would be the reimbursement of charges that may have come from the ambulatory expenses charged to the city. Staff are working collectively with SCR 911 to work that through. And then as well as the parties collaborating with SCR 911 to develop and implement protocols that effectively prioritize emergency services within the county. So that language that was in the amendment that was brought forward to the county is, remains unchanged. Any additional cost recovery efforts implemented by the city will not result in a reduction of compensation. So the idea is we're going to continue exploring ways to increase recovery of costs. And so those end up being policy decisions and operational activities that we would bring back to the council. And so there's not a lot of money out there, but there are ways that other fire departments do get some cost recovery. So we would look at implementing those. That's nothing that would happen overnight. And so what the idea would be is if we're able to collect some of those, then we would put that towards our collective share. The termination provisions, so we do have the 270 day notice. And then basically we have a statement in here that, you know, the intrinsically interdependent nature of fire services between San Juan and the county creates a situation where neither entity can effectively maintain adequate service levels independently. The interdependence is evident in the shared personnel, equipment, training resources, dispatch systems, mutual aid agreements that have evolved to serve our communities efficiently. And so to protect those, both jurisdictions from severe operational disruptions, unsustainable cost increases, and potential public safety compromises that would result from unilateral withdrawal, our proposal includes, will include a mutual, robust mutual cancellation provisions, whereby termination by one party, county or San Juan, would trigger the cancellation of both entities. And this approach recognizes the practical reality that our current service models, financial viability, and effectiveness depend on the continued participation from both San Juan and the county, with neither entity currently possessing the independent capacity to maintain equivalent service levels without the other's involvement in the established framework. And so what we looked at is for the compensation overall for 2526, that would be a $3.9 million increase collectively with an annual escalator of 8%. And so if you look at it from, another way to look at it is this would be for 2526. If I apply the dollar amount being asked for 2526, that would be 6040 against this year's budget. So if our budget didn't change at all as we go into the next year's budget, this is a 6040 split. When we did the original time on call that we presented about a year ago, that was when we looked at the time on call, and we spoke about like a medical aid down the street versus a medical aid 20 miles away would have different costs associated with it. That was a 53.4% county and San Juan split versus 46.6% Hollister split. We did bring the inflator down. I would mention that, you know, in this line of work, having that inflator, as I talk with the chief around budget time, we too are in proposing, you know, budgets and working together to look at what those budget costs look like. You may have in the past where 3% was $100,000. And for the county, a 3%, or for San Juan, the 3% may have been, you know, 20 grand. And then we update our radios. The radio costs for each of the, each of the men on those engines in those jurisdictions would be more than the annual increase just right there alone. So as we have different costs come up, right? That's where we had that inflator. It does take into consideration kind of the one-time nature of some of these, these costs as well. Equipment expires, you know, you don't just buy hose and it lasts forever. And so that was, that was kind of the thought process behind that as well. It does maintain the 3O staffing, which was a tenant of option E. And we consider it a very generous and fair offer of the one time for fiscal year 2425 of $1.25 million collectively, though that was the collective sum that the county and San Juan were basically discussing and almost at approval to provide to the city for this fiscal year as a retro. So it's in the understanding of we are providing these services. I think the council has made it clear that we're providing these services at a, you know, at a ratio that is a little unbalanced. And so that would help your partner out from that perspective. And so that's what, that's what we were asking. So before I have chief get up and talk a little bit about methodology, what this would do is we would provide these later to you, to you later today. And there is a 90 day provision to complete negotiations. And so if an agreement's not reached within those 90 days, then we would continue to provide service through December 20th, but prepare on our end for what that looks like going forward. And so chief, if I could just ask you maybe to step up for a moment and, and kind of talk about how we got to that number. So thank you.
Good morning. So as the city manager explained before, when we were talking numbers before, we had looked at total time spent on calls. And the bigger benefit went to the combined San Benito County and San Juan Batista, where we were, the city of Hollister was equivalent to about 46%. This time what we did is we didn't study the time spent on calls. We merely looked at calls and where they responded to. So the two things we looked at is where did the caller, where was the primary unit originating from? So if there were multiple units going to the call, say like a vehicle accident where they were coming from station, one and two, it was whose primary jurisdiction are they responding to? So if that would, so say it was right here, this would be the city of Hollister. So that would be equivalent to station one is the originating call. And then what jurisdiction did we respond to? So we looked at all four stations and then we looked at where were the calls responded to. So when we did that and eliminated the time on calls, we ultimately found that there was roughly a 60% of the time, the benefit was to the city of Hollister regardless of which station they came from. And so the numbers were based upon Hollister getting 60% of the benefit from the responses. The other side of that is when we were discussing numbers before, we were discussing on a 2324 budget, and it was applied to the 2425 budget. So the increase from 46% to 60% on the Hollister side of things, and, and then the adjustment from the 2324 numbers to the 2425 numbers. And that's where we came up with the methodology for the dollar amount.
Thank you, chief. So ultimately, you know, there's been different ways to look at the dollars and how the split has been done. We've heard from, you know, our team, we've heard from the community that, you know, there is a benefit. And we know there is a benefit when there are the other stations. If something happens in our community or in our city boundaries, then those units can come in and vice versa. Our folks can go out into the county and bring a greater response and into San Juan to provide a greater response. And so what the idea was to calculate out a share of that and what that benefit is. Because the city does get a benefit from that and we want to be mindful of that. And so like I said, it's basically the city, if, if our budget remains unchanged into this next fiscal year, this split would be a 6040 with the city of Hollister picking up 60%. And that's for four stations that are staffed at 3O. So that's a city having two stations, a county station and a San Juan station to get the city at 60%.
Great. And just to clarify again, the, before we get back to our, I just want to get clarification on numbers here. The $3.9 million, what the additional amount that we would be, that you're requesting for, to go from what we previously talked about, minimum staffing of two to minimum staffing of three is essentially $2.5 million. Is that correct?
Yeah, and we looked at it under a different methodology as well to provide a share overall. The, the previous offer that was placed in, in front of both parties was, was very, very generous. And so what we did is we took a step back and looked at the methodology and applied the formula based on this methodology. So to, just to compare how you landed at 1.1 versus this, that 1.1 was, you know, negotiated through, through the ad hoc team. Whereas what we did is we had direction to go under the option E framework and come back with a new proposal. And that's what we did.
But all I'm clarifying is that because we had an agreed upon, we had an agreement in principle was that this is $2.5 million because of the, the request to go to the minimum three staffing. And that was the policy that came from the council. There's an additional $2.5 million that's going to be on top of, for the county in San Juan, roughly on top of what was previously on the table.
Roughly, that is accurate.
Okay. Appreciate that. And just before we go to public comment, since there are a couple of items on the agenda that I as chair did make recommendations on, I do want to clarify, you know, especially in light of the decision from the council last night on the $3.9 million in order to have minimum staffing of three firefighters versus two. What we just heard was that basically amounts to an increase of $2.5 million on top of what was already on the table, which the council, Hollister council did previously approve in principle. Just want to reiterate that those numbers and then to me, it's in the best interest of all three jurisdictions at this point to come to the table and hear one another's perspective on really the financial reality of this situation, particularly the reality of what is affordable in the short and long term for all three jurisdictions. And so what I'm hearing is, when I hear $3.9 million and this started at roughly 3.8 plus the San Juan contribution is that we're basically at square one from a financial perspective after all these months of negotiations. And we're being asked for close to $4 million on top of our existing contract. And it's very clear to me that neither the, it's very, very crystal clear. We have to look at the numbers, it's our responsibility, that neither the county nor San Juan Batista can afford minimum staffing of three under the current model. But I do believe it's, I do believe it would be responsible and productive for the next step to be for all three jurisdictions to get in a room and to talk about the finances. And so therefore I will be proposing to postpone, at least temporarily, the dissolving of the negotiations ad hoc and proposing that we schedule an ad hoc committee among the three jurisdictions, ad hoc committee members as soon as possible so that we can talk about the situation. And then at the same time, it is our absolute responsibility, considering the clock is ticking, considering the financial constraints we're facing as a county, putting aside this fire situation that we cannot afford. It is our absolute responsibility to look seriously at what it will take to create a county fire department. So I'll be recommending that we do move forward with the creation of an ad hoc to create a fire department. That being said, do we have any public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And in chambers, we'll start with Josh Basetta.
Good morning. My name is Josh Basetta, and I'm the president of the firefighters union, representing the dedicated men and women who proudly serve the communities of San Diego County. I stand before you today not to deepen divides, but to build bridges. Our firefighters work tirelessly, day and night, to protect the lives, property of the people of San Diego County, Hollister, San Juan Batista. But we know our effectiveness on the ground is only as strong as the partnership that we build in this room. Right now, we find ourselves at a crossroads regarding this fire and emergency service contract. Tensions have risen, mistrust has grown, misinformation has spread, and the public, those who depend on us during their worst days deserve better than a fractured leadership. This is why I'm calling for a unified step forward. I respectfully request that two members of this board, two council members from the city of Hollister, two council members from the city of San Juan Batista, along with their respective city managers, the county C A O, the fire chief, union representation, all come together in the same room with transparency, professionalism, and a purpose. Let's work together through our differences, align our visions, and commit to what is best for the people that we serve. We are not adversaries, we are partners in public safety. And when we collaborate, our communities are safer, our services are stronger, and our trust in one another is restored. The firefighters union stands ready to participate in this process, to be the voice of those of the front lines, to be part of the solution, and to lead by example, and show the residents that we can unite around a shared commitment to their safety and well-being. We as union members have no personal gain for this contract. This is about service to the community. Thank you for your time, your leadership, and your willing to come together in the same room. Thank you.
Next in chambers, Mia Casey.
Good morning. You know, I, I don't really know supervisor Zanger, because Mickey and Velazquez, what you're thinking. Your actions and your behaviors don't make sense. And I don't believe you're listening to the community, the constituents that elected you and that you're supposed to represent. You're not really up here to simply do what you think is best. You're supposed to be representing the desires of those who put you there. And it's been repeated over and over in meetings that what we want is for you to put your egos aside and attempt to control this entire contract negotiation process and instead work in collaboration with Hollister and San Juan Batista. I don't believe you've been acting in good faith. First, the refusal to even come to the table for over six months. Then locking out the proper negotiators and experts from the process in sort of a backroom deal, which let's be honest, didn't even really address the issue of the shared cost. Now you're heading down this nonsensical path, claiming you're going to contact, contract with CAL FIRE or build your own department rather than collaborate with the cities. You claim you cannot afford the $4 million, but you can come up with $15 million for CAL FIRE? Or 25 to 50 million to build your own department? How does that even make any sense? You know, last night, the council did come back with a set of terms that are fair, asking you to pay that portion that you had already set aside for this year and giving you time to go back. You're about to go through your budget negotiations and to allow you to find a way to pay that share next year. You know, there's been a lot of talk about budgets and constraints. Everyone, all the, all the communities, all the cities, all of the counties are struggling, not just you guys. But we also have to talk about what's fair. And I'd ask you to look at this from a different perspective. You know, despite the fact that we know it's grossly underfunded, you know, the sheriff's department budget over the years has risen to $10 million. Likewise, the jail budget, it's grown to over $10 million. But you're insisting that $3.3 million for fire protection for the entire county is too much? It's not, and it's time to adjust and reprioritize fire because it's needed to keep our people safe. And because it's what your constituents want, do the right thing and work in collaboration in good faith with Hollister and San Juan Batista. Thank you.
Next in chambers, Elias Salinas.
It would have been really great had your interim C A O presented at least what was discussed in October of last year, when you already went through this. This is not new to you sitting up there as a board supervisors. So at least present that, what it was going to cost, why it wasn't feasible, and now you want to start all over again. And again, where's the Prop 172 money? You know, you made a presentation that it was, you know, the percentages, but where did it come in? And where did it go? Because, and you say that the reality is that you're right supervisor Cosmiki, and you have the responsibility, the finances, and you're the stewards, and that only you know best. And you want to negotiate in good faith? Show it. Show you want to negotiate in good faith? Place a female supervisor on your ad hoc committee. Place the fire chief on the ad hoc committee, the city manager, your interim C A O, and the fire union representative. That's how you prove it. I dare you to prove it and bring them to the table with you. You can be on it, or you can, your buddy Ignacio. I don't think Dom can be on it because Dom only follows what you tell him to do. Show you have good faith. Show you can be responsible to the citizens of this community, the constituents that you own. Because right now, Mr. Cosmiki, you're not looking good to your constituents. You put out a public letter to the county, to the city council of San Juan Batista? No, don't even try it. Don't even go there, buddy. No.
I was at zero. Sorry, I was at zero. Let's go ahead.
Yeah. You can't even show your face there. You were at a public meeting with over 100 people, you and Ignacio, and you made statements and the public shut you down with facts. And that's what you're lacking. You're lacking facts. The county has money. You win and you made a deal and you did not have the approval or the numbers by the entire board of supervisors, yet you claimed you had. And you tried to gaslight both the female supervisors on what the decision was. You need to go back and you need to start over again, and you need to bring it with good faith. And let's see if you can know how to do that.
Next in chambers, Maria Romero.
And before you guys just saying, you know, they're the first respond in line after the police department too, and after our organizations like us. So I really want you guys to think about the decision. And I trust God that God can give you knowledge and wisdom to all of you guys to get the best response for them. Just keep it in mind, they're there for your family too, not only for us and for all of these. God bless you.
Next in chambers, Christina Navarro.
Hi, I'm just here to show my support to the fire department and appreciation. I work for the Salvation Army and every Christmas we serve about 300 families, a little bit more, depending on how much toys we can receive. And they're like one of the best supporters that we have. And this year, like it touched me and going back to everything that's going on right now with them. I had a family that lost their apartment due to a fire. And they were coming in for help for us, you know, not knowing that fire department had already served them, helped them through this fire. And now they're getting help from them again, bringing toys for their families because they had lost everything. So I want to thank them for everything they do for our community and for the Salvation Army. Thank you.
Next in chambers, Joe.
All supervisors, I just want to start by, I want to start by saying that, that while I am appreciative of some of the things you have done with like the lobby store and it's all that in the past, I'm not very happy with what's going on here as with the fire situation. Time and time again, the people have asked for our, the fire chiefs to be on the, on the ad hoc committee. And this has been refused over and over again. I am grateful that the ad hoc committee is not being dissolved right now. But I am concerned that, 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 that there doesn't seem to be any desire to bring them to the negotiating table. And in fact, the, it seems, it concerns me that there may be an ad hoc committee created for a county fire department, which I'm not sure what the move is there, but, I mean, if you can find the money, I don't know how you can because you don't have money. But if you can, I guess, great, but I don't know. I don't know, I'm really concerned here. I'm, I don't understand why I'm paying you guys to do this when I'm also, you know, through my taxes, when folks that I pay for also, like the fire department, aren't being allowed to the negotiating table. I'm paying you guys for this. Like that, 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 I'm paying you guys to leave other people, other experts that I pay for to, to, to not be allowed to the negotiating table. And I cannot wrap my head around that, around, around the justification for that. This is something that people will, will pay, people are going to, people are, people have given you their votes. People have given you their dollars. Both of these things, okay, one, only one of those can be taken away. But the, the point is, is that we, we pay, we give you our dollars, we give you our ballots, and somehow you're not bringing the fire chiefs onto the, onto the negotiating table when that's all we've been wanting for so long as a bare minimum. I cannot wrap my head around that. The public comment I made earlier, the general public comment I made earlier was to ground the situation and to put politics, to humble the political situation of this issue. Going to discuss the, the 2020 lightning siege. I was trying to put the situation, trying to, trying to understand that, that this is, these are real things that happen. Lightning falls out of the sky sometimes, and when it does, it causes fires. And that's, that's a real situation that has happened on multiple occasions. Four times since 1987, this state has been barraged by lightning storms. It will happen again, and I would bet good money that it'll happen before the end of the decade. Dom, I voted for a man who will listen to, who not only, who not only listen to the people, but who will obey when the majority of the people speak. So I will put out a, a, I will put out a couple of polls on social media and in person and see what the public opinion is, and I'll come back with you with the results. Thank you.
Next on Zoom, Stacy, you've been unmuted and you have three minutes.
Hi, Chair and supervisors, thank you so much. As I reflect over the past year in regards to the fire department negotiations, I think about what a learning opportunity that this has been. There are processes in place. There's a way that you do things and there's reasons for those processes. And it's pretty obvious now that straying away from those processes, creating an ad hoc of the two members from our county supervisors and the two members from the city council without including necessary stakeholders, without including people with information, intentionally excluding the people that you needed to have at the table. Well, it's been a real learning opportunity because it hasn't gone well for obvious reasons. So I am hopeful that the learning opportunities were received. I am hopeful that we can move forward now with a committee that does include the necessary stakeholders, the people with different perspective, with different experiences, with the necessary information, and not just sycophants that surround you and say, oh, yes, oh, yes, this is a wonderful idea, when maybe it's not. There's been a lot of mistakes made over the last year. There has been lost trust, lost respect, and destroyed relationships. And those things matter, and they're going to matter for a long time. So do the right thing, which isn't necessarily maybe what you want. Include all of the stakeholders, be public, be transparent. Don't just say you're transparent, actually be transparent. And put together a good contract with the city and with San Juan Batista because we all deserve the best. And we expect. with the city and with San Juan Batista because we all deserve the best and we expect the best from all of you every single day. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. We will bring it back to the board for questions and comments. Do we want to, Supervisor Velazquez was also on the ad hoc, so I'll give you the floor if you'd like.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Point was made. This problem didn't start recently. Over six months ago, it was created by the former mayor. Absolutely, I'm going to go again. Mia Casey, the city council that decided to issue a 270. Now, six months ago, why didn't they work this out? You had the majority votes and yet it didn't get worked out. Just a lot of laughing, a lot of made up information as is always done. Heard it today. 25 million to build a new fire department. No, it's not going to cost 25 million. It shouldn't cost anything because we should be still working together. That's what should be happening. But as I warned back in 2019, we were on a path that was going to fail because all it would take is a recession or mismanagement by one of the agencies. That's exactly what happened. You might want to laugh all you want, you might want to try to cover it all you want, Ms. Casey, but the city of Hollister is in serious financial. I'm speaking, I have the floor. Thank you very much.
Point of order.
Thank you. I have the floor.
Point of order. I'll have to call a recess if this continues. And if we cannot have, we cannot, excuse me, excuse me, we cannot have back and forth with audience members. I believe as the former mayor, he's, he has the right to allude to your actions. Thank you.
Absolutely. I, as I pointed out, mismanagement, not understanding dollars is how these situations occur. We had an agreement, this is a few short weeks ago, of a million dollar increase. So it's not easy to come about and make that happen. Now that number is 4 million. 4 million. We were struggling trying to figure out how to get to a million. Now we're talking about 4 million. And again, people might just keep.
Excuse me, we can't have audience disruptions. One more time and we'll be calling a five minute recess. Thank you.
Some, some people do not like facts, but those are the facts. Now, we can't just as a county decide, hey, we're going to be reckless too. And let's go start cutting our sheriff's department, let's go start cutting our DA department, let's, let's not fix the roads, let's not fund our retirement. That doesn't work. That's how problems are created. It's frustrating, again, sincere, but I understand. See, Andrew, you guys made a fair offer. We worked together for the 1.1. It didn't go through for whatever reason, but to come back now and say, well, that 1.1 is now 4 million, you guys worked that out. It's not that easy, folks. You don't just go create new money. You have to make sure all these different departments are funded and funded properly. Do I want to see us working together? Of course I do. I'm the one that was involved creating this whole partnership. And it's frustrating for me to see this thing fall apart, but it's not going to work in the direction that we're going. At least it won't work for very long. So hopefully we can sit down again and work something out. But I think in the meantime, Mr. Chair, we still need to move forward with the idea of creating our own department. And I think it's time we do put it into the, the funding or the idea of the district because that election is too close and we're nowhere near where we need to be to have something be successful. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'd like, Supervisor Crowe, work down the line.
There were a couple of things at yesterday's city council meeting that I thought were very important to highlight. One, it's not just about the money, it's about the people. And one of the speakers at yesterday's, at last night's meeting really brought it home for, I think a lot of us, I think we all felt, we have a thousand students in the unincorporated area of the county that are always, every day at risk of a fire, some sort of, you know, event that could happen at any school at any time. And we need our first responders to be ready to address those situations. Additionally, one of the council members said that we're better together. I know it sounds cliche to say it, but truly we are better together. We can reduce overhead, we can reduce, we can reduce conflicts between agencies if we work better together. Now, I don't know if it's possible, but I do appreciate the chair saying that he does support the ad hoc of San Juan Batista and the ad hoc of Hollister and the ad hoc of the county to come together with our administrative chiefs and our fire chief and really have a conversation about the reality of what, where can we and what can we afford. I don't feel confident right now until we get further along in the budget cycle of being able to say what that number could be. And, and that's what negotiating is. Negotiating is sitting down and two or more parties, which we have three, and coming up with options that can make a solution happen. It, it is sad that we've kind of come full circle, but it's also an opportunity. When reaching out to my constituents, their biggest fear is constantly the time it takes for response to get down to South County. I am very much committed to the three O, but I know there's no way we're going to be able to come up with a 6 million or a $7 million ticket, you know, that we can afford long term. I'm saddened to hear that we're not going to continue looking at a feasibility study for a fire district because to me, that has been like the glimmering hope at the end, that if we could get through this short period of time, the long goal is to fund a fire district so that all of this is something that we don't have to keep repeating. Because this contract right now is only going to 2028. We're going to be right back here again. Some of the areas that I want to make note of, it, it's, it's interesting to see some of the stats coming from Hollister, that it was 46% Hollister and 53 on, I believe that was the call response time versus 60% Hollister and 40% San Benito and San Juan Batista when it comes to actual response areas. The methodology is something that I think we really need to look at, and I think that's something that the ad hoc should be discussing, how the methodology is formed and how that methodology affects each. Because the city of Hollister will still have a fire chief, they will still have all the overhead, even if we are pushed out of being able to come up with an agreement between the three jurisdictions. Cost management and future cost increases are a major concern of mine. And the reason they're a major concern is because we're in a situation that we originally were at a $5 million overall budget to now a $16 million overall budget. And I don't believe this board or former board members were included in any of those financial decision making. And now we're being asked to fund those decisions. It's very hard to go backwards and now say, okay, we're going to only be able to fund two per engine because we weren't involved in the decision making to go to three. If we are truly going to be partners, we have to treat this as partnerships. And that means even the tough conversations have to happen when you don't want to have them. And we're at a turning point where we need to have those tough conversations and we need to come together as a community and figure out how can we push through this. I am still very supportive of the fire district feasibility study moving forward. I do not want to abandon that as our future end game because I believe that that was a goal of this board, is the end game was the feasibility study and the future fire district. I want to thank Mayor Jordan for representing San Juan Batista's city council wishes. They, on March 18th, I attended that city council meeting and it was unanimous by the city council to reject the amendment, but it also was unanimous that an ad hoc would be formed of the mayor and council member Freels to negotiate with the county and the city. And I do very much support that and I support her representing the will of her council. The 8% justification of increases, I have a really hard time wrapping my head around. I have to understand that more. It doesn't make sense. If, if, if it's 8%, there's no way we could authorize this level of funding. Thank you, gentlemen. It's impossible to authorize the funding from the county if we have to have almost a half a million dollar increase every year. That is not sustainable and I think this board knows that. The 90 day negotiation stop seems like a gun put to our head. The 270 is a big enough gun. Now we need 90 days to put the gun a little bit closer to our temple and pull the trigger because we can't get along and have a conversation from the ad hocs and our administrative leaders. The cost savings, if we are true partners, cost savings should be looked across the board, across all agencies. Where can those cost savings come from? And the benefit should be to all, not just to the city of Hollister. If we're able to reduce costs in San Benito County and the unincorporated area, we should be able to benefit from those cost savings because it's pushing us closer and closer to not being able to fund the fire department. If we keep pushing forward with 8% increases and we don't look at cost savings as a whole for our community. The 2.5 million increase to stay at the three O staffing is the conversation that we need to have because the three O staffing is something that I feel we need to really try and find a way to make happen. I don't know what that would look like, but I hope that can be our end game to at least get through this contract negotiation. I've pretty much covered everything that's in my notes. I had a few other things, but I will hold them for later comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Zenger.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. So I'll say that I actually, I agree with Supervisor Crowe in that I, I also don't see how we could possibly afford the 6 to 7 million number that's been thrown out. And if the city is hard lined on the three O staffing and the, and the 6 to 7 million number and we can't afford it, seems like an unfortunate impasse. And so I don't really know how we would rectify that at the moment. I don't, I don't know how those, I don't know how we can square that essentially. So to me, it seems like an impasse at the moment and I, I guess if there's something that maybe I'm missing, it'd be great to know about, it'd be great to explore, but I just don't see how that's possible to, to square that circle there. Regarding the methodology, I understand the new methodology, I understand what's presented there. I will say that, and I know I've talked to the fire chief about this, I do think it is important to know not just where these calls are taking place, but the actual, where the residents, if they are county residents or city residents. I know the fire chief has, we've, we've talked about it and he's explained that, well, it's, it doesn't really matter because, you know, if you're in Santa Clara and, you know, you go over there, they're still going to report to you, the Santa Clara will. But I would say it, it is relevant if, you know, the majority of calls in Santa Clara were from outside of their county, I think that'd be relevant information. So I know we don't have the data and it's a shame, but it would be nice to know, because I know we're essentially a commuter town, we have a lot of city residents that are commuting outside of the city into the county and there's a lot of vehicle incidents. So I would be interested to know actually, not just where the cars, calls take place, but the residents of the calls, where they actually reside, whether it's city or county, because I do think that would be just relevant information for the discussion. Other than that, I would say, I would be, I am supportive last time, I'm still supportive of moving forward with a separate ad hoc to discuss other options, like starting our own fire department. Regarding the formation of that ad hoc, I know it was a three, two vote to go forward with that. I would support one of the supporting and one of the dissenting votes to sit on that. I think we've done that with other ad hocs in the past, I'd be fine with that. And I'm indifferent as to how that plays out exactly, who wants to be on that versus, versus not. Just I would say that split, I would be supportive of that, but other than that, I don't, you know, the specifics of who it is, I'm, I'm open to discussion on that. And as far as the chair's recommendation to, I guess, continue the existing ad hoc to have a discussion on the financials, I, I would be, I'd be open to having the jurisdictions meet up and, and discuss that and explain, but I'm afraid that a lot of the discussion is going to be essentially how the county cannot reach these numbers. And I think there's acknowledgement, thus far, what I've heard on the board, I haven't heard Supervisor Setello yet, but from the three of the supervisors that spoke, is that there is an acknowledgement that we can't do that. And so if that discussion needs to be explained and more thoroughly explained to, you know, that these numbers aren't going to work for us, we can do that. And I would say, I think that's it. I covered it.
Thank you, Supervisor Setello.
Thank you. So I'm going to answer some of the questions that I feel like we were, kind of, you were asking for, for kind of direction in this agenda item. So first off, the level of service, I just don't think we can afford to go backwards. I think the community's health and safety is our priority. So for me, going backwards is, it's very, very unsettling for me. Regarding the fire feasibility study, I support us moving, continuing to move forward on that. And I, I agree with Supervisor Crowe, I think this is potentially the long-term solution for fire service for this county. I would like to see us continue to negotiate with Hollister and San Juan Batista. And I appreciate Chair Cosmicky, you saying that that is something that you support as well. Again, I think we have the responsibility to keep this community safe. I am very concerned about the 90 day provision to complete the negotiations. I don't know how feasible that actually is. I have a, Supervisor Crowe actually covered a lot of the different topics that I had concerns with. I'm concerned with the annual escalator at 8%. I think that's incredibly high. I do have a question though. So if we have our own fire station and Hollister Fire Department responds to something because we're going to have very limited staffing, I'm assuming we're talking about one station for the county to cover the entire county area, the unincorporated area. If the city of Hollister Fire Department responds, last night at the city council meeting, they made it very clear that they're going to bill us for every call that they respond to. So I'm just curious, like, how does that work into the picture, right? So they're going to go down to two stations, from the way that I understand things, and I could be incorrect in that, but it sounds to me like they'll keep their two stations, we'll have potentially one station. So it seems like there would be a lot of calls that they respond to. And how does that kind of mutual agreement work? I just, I can't wrap my, wrap my head around how this is actually going to work in the real world, us having our own department and then potentially we're looking at millions of dollars, starting our own department. And then the unknown to that is what do we end up getting billed for because the Hollister Fire Department responds? Because there's no way we are going to be able to cover all of the calls that come in for the unincorporated area. And so I just have real, real concerns. I understand the budget is, you know, our numbers are not there. However, I really would like to see us get into budget. I'd like to have some conversations. I'd like to see what we could possibly do. I would. I would love the ad hoc to really negotiate and bring back some options for us to consider. And that could be everything, right? All, you know, the methodology for the cost share, the, the annual escalator, the, the split, just kind of everything. And so I would hope that the city of Hollister would be open to that. But I really, I agree with Supervisor Cosmiki, I really think that the path forward is getting everybody in that room together to really have the hard conversation and see what we can do. I would be, and I hope one of the concerns that they address or one of the issues is this 90-day provision. I think that it just seems, it seems a little short. So, and I understand timeliness is, is so important in this, but these are some big numbers for all of us to consider, right? Every single jurisdiction, this is a lot. And so I would just hope that we can have healthy conversation and a lot of collaboration and cooperation happening and really come to a decision that benefits all three, which I understand is going to hurt all three of us a little bit. But right now it feels like it's really hurting the city of San Juan Batista and the county because we, we just don't have the budgets to support this at the moment. Does that mean we need to reprioritize? Possibly. We're going to be getting into our budget and so I think there are a lot of conversations to happen. So I really support us moving forward with the, the ad hoc negotiating and so those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Setello. And as mentioned before, I'll be supporting, putting off elimination of the negotiations ad hoc in light of what occurred yesterday for now and do support creating an ad hoc to take direction from the entire board and work with staff on refining recommendations for the creation of a new fire department. It's our only choice, as I stated earlier, you know, we have a clock that's ticking, we have financial constraints we're already facing, we're being asked to contribute a dollar amount on the top of the previously agreed upon contract, in principle at least, that is not realistic whatsoever. And so I will just reiterate from a budget standpoint, as our interim CIO Ring alluded to earlier, we are getting into the budget, we have had, we have a budget ad hoc, so I'm privy to some of the discussions. There's a likelihood for reductions in our budget. When you take out this fire situation altogether, there's, there's, if we weren't facing this situation right now, we would be looking at likely reductions in our budget. So everything on top of what we're already offering on the table is going to amount to significant, very painful reductions, including likely layoffs, massive, massive amounts of cuts. And inevitably that would include other public safety departments that would be facing likely layoffs if, if we somehow decided to move forward and just basically allocate the dollar amount that's being requested. We're talking about sheriff's deputies, we're talking about jail employees, we're talking about the DA's office, we're talking about probation and the list goes on and on. We would likely have to look at the potential closure of our library if, if we, if we had to move forward with the dollar amounts that are on the table. And all this aside, there's a structural budget problem here that somebody has to step up and face. And I pointed it out, I would like to get further level of accounting on the actuarials at some point and where this budget is heading in the next three years, five years, 10 years, so the public truly understands the cost of where we are headed with this. As I pointed out, in recent years, we've essentially been escalating about a million dollars a year and this last year it was $2 million a year. So it would be very helpful to understand that chart, where it's going and where we're going to be at if, if we continued on this path, which to me is unsustainable. And as decision makers, it's our responsibility to recognize this and to face it, not to just kick the can down the road, which appears to be what some people want to do and I will not personally be involved with kicking the can down the road and putting this problem on somebody else's shoulders years down the road. We have to address it now. That's the structural problem. There's the county's budget problem. And so all that aside, I will be suggesting that we do, like I said, that we put off eliminating the ad hoc for now so that we can have discussions, we get in a room with San Juan Batista's ad hoc, Hollister's ad hoc, along with relevant staff members and, and discuss the situation so that the very least, we're all having an open conversation about one another's perspectives on this and we can all understand what we're all facing here in this situation. I think we owe that to ourselves, to the public. And so we maybe come out of there with a clearer direction on where we're headed as a group, if we can move forward as a group. And so that's one suggestion. The other suggestion was creation, of course, as I mentioned earlier, of an ad hoc to basically start working with our fire consultants who would be advising the board on the next steps. I would say as soon as possible, an open session, I would like all these meetings to be in public from as far as the, we have ad hoc meetings where they go and they talk numbers and they'll come back basically and all that information will be public. The board will be giving direction based on the ad hoc's recommendations in open session. And I personally would like to see at least monthly meetings where we have updates, if not more frequently, but at least monthly updates on where we're at, next steps as far as creating a fire department and the details that are discussed in the ad hoc. And I would, since I put it on the agenda, I know Supervisor Zenger mentioned having a supervisor who was in support of the concept and one who was against it, I will also support that. I would just ask the board if there is, if there is a preference from the two members who were in opposition of, on the last votes, if one of you would like to be on the ad hoc committee. So I would just kind of open that up instead of me just giving a recommendation. I would like to get their take if I can first, Supervisor Velazquez, is there a preference if one of you were on the committee? Or if neither of you do not want to be on the committee, then we will certainly keep moving forward with others.
I don't necessarily have a preference, but because of some of the options that we're going to have to be looking at, one, I do not support cutting safety, whether it's DA, sheriff, any of that, but we do have to start looking at budget and our contractual obligations. So I would not mind being on this, but I would really leave it up to Supervisor Setello to make that call.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I'm good with you being on this ad hoc. I think you actually, you were on the fire advisory committee previously, so I think you've got more experience in this arena, so I would defer to you. So I'd be happy to support you in being on that ad hoc. I appreciate that.
And is there a preference for who would like to also be on that committee? Creation of the fire department taking, I have to be clear, it's taking direction from the board, so it's not just going off. I think we have to have a foundation meeting where we set direction and the ad hoc goes back and works on that direction.
I would like to be on.
Okay.
Thanks, Mitty.
Yeah, I'm, I'm definitely good with that. I would just say with this ad hoc specifically, we really need to make sure that we're giving clear direction to the ad hoc as to exactly what they should be exploring and moving forward with. I think that's really important that they have clarity on that so that they're not going off and they're not, you know, they have a, it's easier for them to work if they have more clear focus. So I would just say that.
Appreciate that. I would also request that there be consideration, if there is interest from San Juan Batista, to have the conversation about if this, if we start heading down this direction of a county fire department, if San Juan Batista would have interest in being part of that and what that might look like as well. So I think I would like to see some communication with San Juan Batista, I know the mayor's in the audience here as far as just having all our options on the table. So what I'm hearing is there are two things, there are three things. Negotiation ad hoc would, would invite Hollister and San Juan Batista ad hocks to a meeting with staff members to discuss the current situation is one recommendation. The second recommendation is to create an ad hoc to take direction from the board and work with staff and consultants on the creation of a county fire department. And I would ask that San Juan Batista's interests be included in this. And then third would be the feasibility study question. And I would personally pose that we postpone the consideration of continuing on with the feasibility study or in other words, push pause on the feasibility study at least until we have this discussion among the ad hocks where there may be further clarity on where we're headed with this entire situation due to the cost of that contract and the uncertainty of the current situation. So those are the three items on the table. First, if we go one by one, I think it would be wise to go through each of these. Entertain a motion, creating an ad hoc or inviting, I'm sorry, I'll start with the first one, inviting Hollister, San Juan Batista and relevant staff members to the table for an upcoming, as soon as possible, meeting about the current financial situation. Is that, can I entertain a motion? Is there?
A some move.
I'll second.
Second, all who's in favor, roll call please.
Supervisor Cosmiki?
Yes.
Supervisor Zenger?
Yes.
Supervisor Setello?
Yes.
Supervisor Crowe?
Yes.
Supervisor Velazquez?
Yes.
5-0 motion passes.
Second would be entertaining a motion to create an ad hoc committee comprised of Supervisor Velazquez and Supervisor Crowe on looking at next steps to create a county fire department based on direction from the board. And I would ask that you include exploration of San Juan Batista's interests in this conversation. Is there a motion?
Move designated.
There's a second. All who's in favor, roll call please.
Supervisor Cosmiki?
Yes.
Supervisor Zenger?
Yes.
Supervisor Setello?
No.
Supervisor Crowe?
I'm going to say yes.
Supervisor Velazquez?
Yes.
4-1 vote, motion passes.
And then I put out my thoughts on the feasibility study as did Supervisor Velazquez. I don't know if anyone else wants to further elaborate.
I have a question. Go ahead.
I can add to it. And it's important, I've, I've been a big proponent of the feasibility study for quite a while for a district. The problem is timing. It's, would be very difficult to make it by the next election to have this study done with all the other pieces that go with it, LAFCO and so on. So what would happen if we don't make it? Then the information has to be gathered again for the next election. So for me, it's more of an issue of timing, it's not going to make it, I don't believe it can make it in this cycle. Not that we can't do it later, but I think the timing is off right now and it's going to, we're going to find ourselves having to pay to do, to study again.
Can I ask maybe whoever's involved in that, yeah, thank you, what the cost is associated with it?
It's $100,000, $45,000 for the county, $45,000 for Hollister and $10,000 for San Juan. The contract hasn't been executed yet, so if we wanted to pull back on it, we, we may.
I'm sorry, Chair, do you mind repeating what the county portion is on that?
$45,000.
Didn't we just approve, it was like $99,000 or?
Yeah, so it's roughly 100, so that's the contract we just approved.
Okay, it just would have been billed out to the different jurisdictions, is that how that would have worked? Okay, all right, thank you. And I guess if, if it's okay. I understand the comment regarding the timing, but I guess I just wonder if there's at all a possibility of it happening, shouldn't we at least try to get it going? I understand, you know, let's hypothetically say within 90 days we get this done and we're kind of moving forward. I just, I hate to make a decision right now to just kind of squash it and not have it as an option because if by chance we could get it done, I think it's worth it. And I think that that is the long-term solution. This negotiation, even with the city of Hollister, even if we're successful in that, it still expires in 2028. So it's going to be right around, I mean, it's right around the corner. And so I guess I just feel like we should still continue moving forward. I think I was never on the, this committee, however, I feel like it's something that has been talked about for years. And so I just worry that if we postpone it now, 2028 is going to come, you know, the election cycle for 2028 and we're not going to be ready. And so I guess I would just ask that we continue moving forward the best that we can.
Supervisor Crowe?
Being formerly on the, the advisory committee for fire, it, it comes down to where the other jurisdictions are and are they willing? If the feasibility study did move forward, are the other two jurisdictions willing to move it forward efficiently and not have the roadblocks that we had in the prior feasibility contract? Which was the sharing of information and being able to be transparent with actual numbers to be able to do a feasibility study. It seems, I don't know from the meeting, from the advisory meeting, who was for and who was against the feasibility study moving forward? Yeah, if you don't mind.
If I recall correctly, I think it was the two county supervisors were, we two were against it, at least bringing it, we wanted to bring it back to the board to have the conversation that we're having now and I believe the rest of them. Please, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, we're in favor of moving forward.
Okay.
With the exception of Roxanne, Mayor Stevens.
So, so, okay, so there were three people that were?
There's three and three then.
Three and three, okay. And, and the reason I ask that is because if we don't have the commitment from the city of Hollister to move forward with the feasibility study, it's a waste of money. I mean, we, we experience that and it comes down to trust. And I know our firefighters know exactly what I'm talking about because it is about trust and it's trust that we can do this and we can move it forward. I am very supportive of the feasibility study and being extremely transparent, even with as bad as our budget debacle is, whatever we have to do to fix some of the wrongs in the past to be more transparent, I know our interim CIO is very much dedicated to that and I thank her and all of the staff that have been working on budget. But I support moving forward with feasibility, but if we don't have the majority of the other two in that ballpark, it just seems like a waste of money. So I kind of want from the two of you, do you feel that the city of Hollister will move forward if there was support to move forward on the feasibility study or do you think it would have roadblocks?
City manager, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer that. So going back to the other feasibility studies, there were questions that, that I asked, so I will clarify that, that statement. I had questions of the provider as I came in to the process, had a meeting with AP Triton and then we provided the information. That data request was due January 16th with a project end date of six weeks later. So that wasn't going to meet timelines regardless. What's going to happen in this process, so A, the city is committed to it, we already had started working on the data request ahead of the contract because I said it's a ton of work. So what, what they do is they're going to ask you what you're paying for fire, they're going to ask San Juan what you're paying for fire and then they're going to ask us what we're doing for fire, everything else because we're the lead agency. So there is a lot more work on our end as the lead agency. So I asked already for that, we had already had work started. I hit pause when we had the discussion deposit to see where this is at. We have very limited resources, my finance staff is a few people, so you know, they have other work to do as well, so it is, it is a juggle. How it's going to work is you would go through this study and they're going to lay out options, they're going to look at what we're contributing now and they're going to look at different options. Do you look at a minimalist option, a normal option, an ideal option? And then they're going to look at what's being contributed and then what we would have to do is do agreements. So to go into a district, we're going to have agreement conversations again. So this agreement doesn't just carry forward, we would have a funding agreement based on the model that we choose and what we would put forward into that and then what the balance would need to be from the voters. You would then go into three ballot measures to have it happen. You would have a formation, which is a 50 plus one. You would have, if you needed to have additional revenue to come in from, from the citizens and the residents, you would have a tax measure that has to pass by two-thirds. If the tax measure, if the formation is dependent on the tax measure, then you need the two-thirds to pass. The third piece of it is the board members. So there is considerable effort to get that across the finish line. So if we were to do it, we would need to move on it quickly. But as we work on this agreement, we would have another agreement to work on as part of a district if we were to go there. And so as we've talked about, you know, the, the 90 days and the 270 and we need to look at data, we had a 270 before, we gave so much data that... to look at data, we had a two-seventy before, we gave so much data that, we gave everything we had. So that, part of that ninety days is a recognition of, we issued the original ninety days in June, we're right around the corner, we're ten months out, so let's look at everything again, while we are in a position where we can't sustain what we are providing, it's, I can understand, but for your partner, and we keep hearing the word partner, that it's not putting the city in a fair position. The perceived benefit kind of calculation that we did when we looked at that was, think about it as a methodology to say, we are comfortable as the city, looking to our taxpayers, city taxpayers, to say, yes, this is what we're putting in, we're putting an extra into the pot, because you as a taxpayer get the benefit. You as a taxpayer get the benefit of us helping San Juan out and helping someone that lives in Pisinas. That's how it helps out. And so that was that collective methodology, but as you go to a district to tie it back to that district conversation, we're gonna have another agreement. This agreement just doesn't flow right over, so we will be in another agreement conversation. So as we work to tie this up, as we go through that process, we're gonna have to have another subsequent agreement conversation based on what the feasibility study shows. So I just thought I'd clarify that as, but overall, our commitment is there and I wanted to clarify why there were some questions in the very beginning.
Well, I appreciate that and I also appreciate, there's been some information that's been kind of rumored around and, and I know we have Fire Council in the cloud somewhere, online, in Zoom land. One of the things we have is, is the conversation that, I wanna make sure it's clear, any amendment that happens right now is not locking us into forever. There's been this in perpetuity comment that has been, you know, if we go into a feasibility study, we will be in it for in perpetuity? Well, that's true, but that's the negotiation of the other agreement. And I wanna make sure that that's perfectly clear for the public to understand, because it's been used as a fear tactic. And the fear tactic is, well, we can't move forward with a feasibility study, because then we'll be locked into this rate forever. That's not true, that's another negotiation, and the feasibility study actually will help show where the cost is coming from, but also a LAFCO component of that can also verify where, where cost is and how that could be fair. But this future contract in feasibility land with a special district is a conversation for the future. It has nothing to do with any contract that we're, I just wanna make sure, do I have that correct? Because I don't wanna assume, I've had two times that it's been told to me that we, if we negotiate a contract amendment, that we will be locked into, let's say we approve the six million dollars, which we can't afford, but let's say we did that, that we'd be locked into that in perpetuity as a special district. I know we can't afford that, so I know there's another negotiation that happens, right?
Correct, there is another negotiation. You would probably, unless you are growing services, services, excuse me tremendously, you would look at your existing agreement and probably build from that, right? That would be your variance that you would build off of. I think some of the, the original question, if I can clarify on that, was the original idea of, let's not increase the dollar amount until we get to a district, excuse me, when at that time that district was three years out and dependent on the vote and dependent on a lot of aligning stars. The city's position was, that's great, those two things can occur concurrently, rather than we'll keep going into a cost share ratio that the city does not agree with, and then go through a whole process for the next three years, put it on the ballot and see what happens. And so that's where those two kind of areas converge, but whatever you do negotiate, you would certainly start there, but there is the opportunity, like I said, you would look at different options. You know, what are you doing now, what's the status quo? Do you wanna go to another station? What does that cost, right? And then what are the, ultimately, you know, that's what your feasibility study looks at, what are the costs that you think that you can bear? I mean, if you come back and say we should have fifteen stations and it's gonna be a hundred million dollars, you're probably never gonna get that passed, right? And so there's that delicate blend of, what are we putting into the pot now collectively? What do we think that we need? What are some options? And then what ends up being the ultimate spread of the new rates that come in, the parcel taxes? And that's what the study does, is it looks at all of that, because not all parcels are created equal, and so we would go through that process. So we are committed, we're ready to go, but you know, it's ultimately up to the group collectively, as you said, so.
And just to clarify, it also means we could be looking at in a fire district, a reduction of the area. It doesn't necessarily have to be countywide minus a Roma's tri-county fire area. We could be looking at a south county negotiation with Cal Fire or removing areas that do not have, that are BLM land or state, you know, lands. We could be going the other way also, so it's a two-way, it's not all about one way in a feasibility study, it's the conversation of options, and I just wanted to clarify that.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, it's a LAFCO process, so you could draw whatever the study shows that you think you should draw, so, absolutely.
Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
A question on the, on this topic. You said that we would look at our existing agreement and build off of that, but how does it work if we aren't able to come to an agreement? How does that work in terms of the feasibility study?
Okay, so are you asking if, if you didn't come to an agreement and this agreement expired?
Yes. Well, I guess I don't know how we would proceed, I guess, the feasibility study, if it, we haven't come to agreement and maybe it hasn't expired yet, or it will expire because of the feasibility study process is pretty lengthy, right?
You're going down the two-seventy path and you're still working on this. It would be a concurrent process. So you would still go through the study, the study would still say what, you know, you'd look at your different options, and then what would need to be the dollar amount to get there based on what you're choosing. And then that would be something separate. So if everybody decided this, this contract is on its way to an expiration, now the challenge would be is that would expire December 20th and you're not gonna get out to the vote. So then you're gonna be in, you know, in a timing conundrum where, you know, you don't get out to the vote till November unless you do a special and you're, quite honestly, we don't have time to have something that quick, right? Because it is a long process. So you would still look at negotiating a new agreement that would then get put into the district, and that all becomes part of the overall package that's being voted on. The map, the service area, the whole nine yards, the funding mechanism, who the body is, because you'd have a, you know, a board of directors and that whole piece.
So they would just start from scratch with like, basically, if we couldn't come to a agreement, we just build one from the ground up?
And I'm gonna ask our fire chief as well, we have the good fortune of our fire chief was served on a fire district in the past, so he has some perspective as well.
So I think to make it the most clear for what your question's asking is, when they're analyzing the fire district, we don't have to all be tied together to be analyzed as a potential fire district. So even if we broke apart and became three different jurisdictions, they could still analyze what we would look like as a joint fire district, and no different than Supervisor Curro mentioned, they could look at the boundaries on which the fire district serves. So although, as I've expressed before, I think we're better moving through this process together, there's a mutual benefit. The feasibility study of creating a fire district is not hinge on us completely staying together. They could still analyze the three jurisdictions forming into a fire district regardless of what happens at day two-seventy-one. And they would still analyze what we're asking them to analyze. So if we're asking them to analyze San Benito County, San Juan Batista and the city of Hollister, that is what they're gonna analyze and give you an output of their recommendations. And the other thing, just to point out is, we keep talking about a fire district, they are gonna analyze not just a fire district, but a community service district, different options that still get us to a fire department, but what would be the best option that may or may not be a fire district? There may be other avenues to go through, that's all what this feasibility is supposed to look at.
Thank you, appreciate that answer, my question.
And do Supervisors have further comments on, there's Supervisor Satello?
I'm just wondering if like, on the methodology, you just kind of, you mentioned kind of taxpayers and this and that, and it kind of got me thinking that the city of Hollister has the majority of the population of the county? And so is there a way of us looking at this methodology cost share by population instead of, you know, like, I just, just throwing it out there as an option for, it's just one more way of kind of looking at possibly the cost share that, then it easy for all of us to justify, right? Is that city of Hollister, your taxpayers are paying your percentage based on your population, San Juan Batista, same thing, the county. I'm almost wondering if that's something, a methodology that maybe could be looked at by potentially the ad hoc.
The direction I have is what we slid in front of you. You know, our council, after having the previous discussion, came back with option E, asked for, for us to put this forward, this is what we put forward and this is what was approved. So as the service provider, we're presenting the terms, so I appreciate the, the request of that, that could be something we ask, but technically, this is what we, I mean, I will be providing you a letter saying, these are the terms. We did have, you know, we, in all of the data in the past through the last year, we've provided all of those different types of data elements, I don't know if we provided that exact data, but you could certainly quantify it. And so as it stands right now, this is, this is the terms that, that the city has put forward to slide this over, to treat the county and the city as one negotiating entity, because there's a symbiotic relationship with those two entities. And so those are the terms that are gonna be in front of you.
So maybe I, maybe that kind of creates another question? Is, is the city of Hollister open at all to negotiating with the county and San Juan Batista? Or is what you are proposing, that is it and that's your final and there's nothing that is, you're willing to negotiate beyond what you're offering right now?
Yeah, the city of Hollister has been willing to propose, to negotiate since June of 2024.
Okay, so kind of going back to my question, are you willing to negotiate with us at this point, or is what you're presenting the last best and final?
So they have said that they will negotiate, but with the two as, as a unit.
Gotcha, okay, great.
So, but this is the term, so, you know, I don't have the authority to come up and just strike a new deal.
No, I get that, I just wanted to know, is there a willingness to negotiate? I understand that you've been working on it for quite some time, but we've gotta figure something out between all three jurisdictions. And so I'm hoping that that means true negotiations, right? That it's not any one of us saying, this is the ultimatum, this is, this is it. To me, negotiation is talking and working these things out. And so I, I respect where you guys are coming from, it's just we're gonna need some, if there's no wiggle room, there's no point in us even coming to the table, because there's, you know, and so that's my point, is that can we come to a table and everybody be willing to kind of have some wiggle room?
We have been at the table and we welcome the work that we have done with the ad hoc since January at the table. So we're, but we did have about six months of no negotiating with the county. And during that time, that was a time where we were providing a service.
And I totally, I get what the past, and I respect everything that was done in the past, I'm really concerned about what we're doing moving into the future and how we're working together. And so I'm just trying to clarify that if, is there room for us? And it sounds like you're presenting your terms as they were accepted by your council, now it's, it's really up to us and I've got hope that we can continue to negotiate and work really hard together, so, thank you.
Thank you. If I could ask for further clarity based on that, though, my understanding is that the council has given direction that here's the number, now you two jurisdictions go work out how you're going to divvy out paying that dollar amount, it's not... Can we please not have disruptions from the audience?
That is, that is the current position, that's what the terms were, to slide this over and you would work on that. I mean, I can always ask, but I don't have the authority to just say, yeah, we're gonna sit back down and start all over again and look at the data and do all of these things. We've provided the data, the chief's done a great job of consistently providing the data, we were under a two-hundred-and-seventy-day notice, that would have expired last month, you're now under a new, another two-hundred-and-seventy-day notice, so that's eighteen months, with your partner saying, we need your assistance here.
So I guess for me, I just, the clarity is that, I know you were sort of, sort of nudging him toward, hey, can we take that number and negotiate, but the city council has basically said that's the number, you negotiate with San Juan Batista on how you, just to put that, make that clear, that that's the understanding from my perspective.
Mr. Chair?
And just real, real last point, though, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, no, no, you go ahead, I interrupted your mid-sentence, sorry about that.
We did negotiate, we had an agreement in principle, your council voted yes on it, our county board voted yes on it, and then the whole thing kind of is out of whack now after what occurred. So I just wanna say that on the record, we did actually have an agreement, we spent two months in negotiations and we did have an agreement. The other part is, that's being missing here, that I think the elephant in the room is that there's no guarantee that a district, we go forward with the feasibility study, it's really gonna be up to the voters in the end and whether the voters have an appetite for whatever level of additional tax that would come out of, very likely a district option, that's all. Supervisor Curro?
Two things, when we voted to continue the negotiation ad hoc, the motion was between the three jurisdictions, that's what I voted on.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, just making sure that that was clear.
To have a discussion, absolutely.
Okay, and then number two is, one way of really making this a formation of a jurisdiction or if we do a community service district, however it pans out, in the feasibility study is really involving the public in this decision-making, and if it was a voter initiative to move forward with funding for a fire district, it would not require the sixty-six point six percent. It would be a lesser percentage, I don't know if it's the fifty-five or if it's the fifty percent plus one, but if it was a voter initiative to fund and we collaborated with the residents, it would have a more probable chance of passage, just my comment.
Thank you, and, go ahead, Supervisor Velazquez.
The issue becomes when the tax is involved, that's when it takes the two-thirds.
Not if it's a voter initiative.
If there's additional tax going on properties, then it changes it.
Yeah, we can certainly air that out.
We can ask legal.
Yeah, and I think we can...
I would say this, it's correct in the way that if the voter said, we want the county to put ten million dollars into this and we want the city to put fifteen million and San Juan to put two million, that would be correct, because it's, our agencies have to pay for it. But once we're putting a tax onto a parcel, that's when the two-thirds kicks in. Voter.
I'd just like legal to clarify that.
Can we have legal to further clarify it at a later time? Or if you wanna invite them on now?
I think we can really, we can probably do that at a later time.
Okay, appreciate that. My only question is, you know, and I think that's why I suggested suspending this district from the, from the county side until we have clarity from these discussions, because I just, I'm wondering what the district looks like when we have a county fire department and we have a city fire department? And, and I also wonder how, if the feasibility study needs to have clarity on that before moving forward. That's my main issue with it, and that's why I would suggest suspending the county side moving forward on the feasibility study until we get, at least have that discussion among the three jurisdictions to get a little more clarity. And if you, and if, and if somebody can clarify that, okay, let's say the county does a county fire department and you have the city fire department and that we can still go forward with a feasibility study on a potential district, then I certainly, you know, would be willing to consider that. I just think there needs to be more clarity on that personally, and I, even if it's the next meeting, bringing it back, I would suggest at least having that meeting among the three jurisdictions before we commit to forty-five thousand dollars on something that might be not going anywhere.
I would support that if it came back immediately.
Appreciate that. Any other comments? Is there, is that we okay on, I guess, do we need to entertain a motion, I guess, as stated, that get further clarity and then come back as soon as possible to make a decision on this? Go ahead.
So I guess the, the motion would be to pause the feasibility study until we bring back clarification about being able to do a parallel, if we have a fire department in the county, can we still continue with a parallel feasibility study? And if we could bring that back at the next board meeting, then I would support the pause. That was my motion.
Second.
Second, all is in favor, roll call vote please.
Supervisor Cosmiki?
Yes.
Supervisor Zenger?
Yes.
Supervisor Satello?
Yes.
Supervisor Curro?
Yes.
Supervisor Velazquez?
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion passes.
Okay, I believe that would take us to the end of that item, thank you very much, everybody. Is there a desire for a five-minute break? You got one over here, so we'll...
Should we go into closed session now or are we just?
We don't have...
Oh, we don't have any, I didn't...
A five-minute break, thank you very much.
Recording stopped.
Not currently in the bylaws, but if the board wanted to add that, that would be adding, changing section, just making a recommendation to change Section 5B1. So the sentence would read, "All member appointments shall be for a two-year term, subject to Article 10, except for Board of Supervisors representatives who shall serve at the will of the Board," if you wanted to make that change. Otherwise, it could be adopted as set forth in the packet. I'm available for any questions.
Oh, actually, I'll add the Public Defender Oversight Committee members. Did you want to open with anything? Or we'll go to, otherwise, we'll go to public comment.
Yeah, no, I think let's just go to public comment. I think that's appropriate.
Great. Public comment, please.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment on this item.
You said none?
None.
We'll bring it back to the board then. Supervisor Zenger?
Sure, thank you. Yeah, I hope that this board blesses. We spent a lot of time on these member appointments and reviewing applications. We actually had 14 people apply to be a part of this, representing both community members at large and the community-based organizations. So I think we got a really healthy response. I think we really did our kind of due diligence in reviewing it. And so this comes from the full committee making this recommendation. And I hope that this board will bless what we've done.
And being a new member, it's been very educational seeing the process that the former members had done and then going through the application process and seeing the actual desire of the public to be involved. It is very impressive to go to a committee that has so many people in attendance. We had over, I think, 20 people at our last meeting. So it's been very, it's been, it's been very interesting and educational to hear from the perspective, we had the court, it's, they're not the court clerk anymore. They have a new title. They're the executive. Yeah, they, he was amazing explaining processes to us. And I'm really excited about serving on this. And I thank all of the members for all the work they did last year.
Thank you, Supervisor Zenger.
Yeah. Thank you guys for, you know, the work you put into this. I appreciate it. I went through all the applications and I'm just gonna, personally, I agree with a lot of them. Some of them, I had some differing opinions than the recommendations. So I'm just gonna go through, I guess, what I was thinking, what I liked. So regarding the four additional ex officio committee members, Tim Newman, Dana Edgar, Eric Taylor, Janelle, those are all good. No problem with those, the county positions. I like that recommendation, great. Police Chief Reynoso, Tracy Belton for Social Services in the City of Hollister. The community organizations, Jeanette from Youth Alliance. And then I would just suggest Christine from Transcend as a secondary. And then the voting at large members, I was gonna suggest Daniel Boyle and Bianca Esparza. So those are just my, my recommendations personally, but.
Supervisor Velazquez?
Thank you. I agree with pretty much everything you said. I do have an issue. I cannot support Mr. Salinas or Ms. B. Gonzalez or Ms. Irma Gonzalez. The question I have too is, is LULAC the official group? Or can that be changed? I mean, Latino Coalition is much more active in the community than LULAC.
It can be changed. That's just based upon who submitted the applications when it was open. It was submitted by a member of, from LULAC.
Thank you.
I haven't spoken with any other organizations to see who they would want to serve or whether they'd be interested in serving.
I just think the Latino Coalition is much more active in the community.
Thank you. Can I ask clarification, Supervisor Zenger? You've mentioned Jeanette Garcia Neal from Youth Alliance, which was in agreement. But then Christina Enriquez from Transcend as ex officio. But with the community members at large, Daniel and Bianca, did you have a preference on voting member versus ex officio?
I was gonna suggest, I'm sorry, I guess I said them backwards. It's just I'm in order, I was suggesting Bianca and then Daniel as ex officio.
So Bianca would be the voting member and Daniel would be the ex officio?
Correct.
And did, any further thoughts on why the choices were made from the?
Well, going through the applications, it was strictly on a ranking. From my perspective, it was ranking of, one of the big thing was making sure that they were involved in the community, understood the public defender's challenges, but also was bringing a, like a balanced voice to the committee, whether we agree with the voice or not, trying to balance out all sides. The other thing, I don't recall that the Latino Coalition applied. So I, if they're as engaged, they should have applied. And I can only go off the applications that we received. So I'm sticking with who I went with, with the, it was all done separately and then we brought our votes together. So I'm happy with how it turned out and I appreciate all of the committee members and their support on this.
Supervisor Zenger?
Thank you. Yeah, I think there was a lot of discussion with the committee. And there was a real desire to, from the committee, not necessarily, you know, like it was led by Supervisor Kuro or I, or even our Chief Probation Officer, Ashlyn Canez. The people that have been attending the members kind of of the committee, so to speak, even though we don't have official membership yet, there was this real desire to have someone on the committee that had kind of lived experience and had, and so had been part of the system, had been represented by a public defender. Make sure we had that lens and that perspective. And so that was one of our considerations that, you know, we heard that very loud and clear from that committee and from the public, really, that we needed to have that. So we felt that we really, we really looked at everything and we didn't look outside of people that, we only looked at who applied. And it was publicized. I know, you know, pretty, I felt really comfortable with the publicity that we did with it. We did a video. It was out on social media. It was posted online. We really did our best. And I think you could, it's evident, the response that we got. 14 for, 14 applications, which I think is probably the most that we've received in quite some time, maybe for a committee. And so I am asking you to please respect the committee's recommendation for member appointments. So I'm hoping that you respect all of the time and effort that we put in, even if maybe you don't agree with some of the individuals. They did apply and went through the process. We vetted everything and we feel really confident in our, in our recommendations.
Thank you, and I appreciate everyone who applied. You know, what I come back to on this, though, is that, you know, if we do disagree, I gotta stick with how I feel about it. And it's largely because there's how important this, this committee is. We are starting a new Public Defender's Office here. And, you know, so I would personally like to see, I agree with most of the recommendations, but I would like to see some new voices on this matter. So I will be supporting the recommendation from Supervisor Zenger. And with that, I will entertain a motion.
Just to clarify, I believe that Youth Alliance wanted to be appointed as an organization rather than a specific individual. Yes. If you can include that in your motion.
Okay.
Okay. I'll make a, unless.
Yeah, no, please, I was gonna ask, I just wanted a clarification on what your motion is.
I'll make a motion and I'll try to clear it up as much as I can. So I would make a motion recommending the appointment of Public Defender Oversight Committee members in terms of the voting at large, Bianca Esparza and ex officio Daniel Boyle. The community organizations recommend Youth Alliance and Transcend as the ex officio. And then I would also recommend Tracy Belton, representing Social Services, Police Chief Reynoso, representing the City of Hollister. Four additional ex officio committee members by virtue of holding designated positions within the county, Tim Newman, Dana Edgar, Eric Taylor, and Janelle Casada. I believe that's all of them.
Do you have a further clarification? Oh, sorry, do you have a second?
That's the motion, so.
First and second?
Second.
Alls in favor, roll call vote.
I'm sorry, can I get a, can I make a statement before we do our vote? I'm really troubled by this, to be honest. I think this is so disrespectful, what you're doing to the two of us that sit on this committee. And I, there's definitely a part of me that I feel like, if you're not going to respect and you're not going to trust and you're not going to consider what we are doing, you are wasting our time. And maybe there are two others from this board that want to sit and represent that committee because it is evident you have no desire to listen or respect what I have to say. And I would put together a committee. I have taken this committee so incredibly serious.
There's a vote on the table.
Yeah, and this is her time to be able to have a comment before it continues.
No, there's first and a second, and then we can continue conversation.
Legal counsel, can you please provide an interpretation?
I think you granted it. You asked, she asked your permission.
Yeah, go ahead.
And so I just ask, this is a way for us to move forward together. I just, I am really, really troubled by this. And I'm troubled by the message that you're sending with this. And so if this is the path forward, I really would like you to consider who you'd like to appoint to that ad hoc committee.
Chair, if I could just respond?
Yes, go ahead.
Because I made the motion. I'm not trying to be disrespectful. I don't think it's disrespectful. I think we just disagree. I think we can just respectfully disagree. I don't think it needs to be a fight. I don't think it needs to be framed as, as a, you know, being disrespectful. I think we can just have differing opinions on something. And I do respect the work that you guys put in. But I don't think we necessarily have to agree on everything to show respect to each other. So that's, that's where I'm coming from with this.
Anything further?
You really don't want to hear what I have to say because I think Supervisor Setello said it all. This is absolutely a disrespect of our recommendation.
Yeah, and I would say, I agree with you 100% Supervisor Zenger that like we absolutely can agree to disagree and be very respectful. This is disrespectful. I did not question who you have chosen to put on your Tourism Advisory Committee. Didn't question it at all. Because I trust that you are the committee members that are sitting on there. Even if I disagree with all the things that have happened with that committee, I respect, you two are the representatives on that committee now and I will not get in the way. You are deciding that you've got the majority of the board and you're going to disrupt what we have done, the, all the processes that we've done with this committee and you're going to undo the work we've done, all the time. If this was, if this was your wish, why did you ever even have us consider who would be sitting on that committee? Because it was a joke. You don't care what we have to say. You don't respect us at all. There is zero trust in us. And so I'm really struggling with that. And I agree with you, we can agree to disagree. But what this vote does is it shows that you have no trust in us and that there is no respect for what we've recommended.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Velazquez?
It's unfortunate that this type of conversation go on when just the other week, the exact opposite happened here with the recommendations from the ad hoc. So please, we can have a difference of opinion and that's what it is. There's names that maybe some of them agree with. We move on, we make a vote and we go on.
Again, I've stated my position. If this is the direction you want to move, I respectfully ask you to consider who will be on this ad hoc. Because I'm not gonna waste my time anymore.
We have a vote on the table, roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Cosmiki?
Yes.
Supervisor Zenger?
Yes.
Supervisor Setello? Supervisor Kuro?
No.
Supervisor Velazquez?
Yes.
3-2 vote, motion passes.
Thank you. That would take us to item.
The second part of it would be to take any action on the bylaws?
Well, and I'd like to have, who is sitting on that ad hoc?
That can maybe be brought back at a future meeting for appointment?
Perfect.
I mean, it's not today, right?
It should be.
I don't think.
They're asking to appoint new members of the ad hoc, I think, and, or the committee.
It's not on the agenda.
Yes, so that's an ad hoc consideration. You certainly could bring that back either through a future agenda item or I can bring it back and we'll, we'll look at that for a following meeting if they're so desired. And then the second part was amend bylaws to add requirements, take oath for designees, to file Form 700, clarifying appointments of members and clarifying that Board of Supervisors members are not subject to a two-year term. Can I entertain a motion for approval?
And that would be to indicate whether to add that language that I read during my presentation or not in the vote.
Yeah, the motion to approve.
We have a first, we have a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second?
That's as amended?
As amended, yes. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Cosmiki?
Yes.
Supervisor Zenger?
Yes.
Supervisor Setello? Supervisor Kuro?
No.
Supervisor Velazquez?
Yes.
3-2 vote, motion passes.
Thank you very much. That would take us to item 3.3, which is the considering a resolution supporting proposal to rename Highway 25, State Road 25, from 101 to the City of Hollister as Pinnacles National Park Highway in alignment with the current Pinnacles National Park Highway that runs through Hollister, to approve the legislative action to rename a segment of highway and authorize the board to sign the letter and resolution, delegate authority of interim CAO to seek support letters from local and neighboring jurisdictions, is that necessary? And just as a very brief overview coming from Tourism Advisory Committee, this came out of the Tourism Advisory Committee as a recommendation from the committee. And there was unanimous vote at the Tourism Advisory Committee to start the process of seeking support essentially from our legislators to look at this. And so it would essentially be from the, and to seek support from Santa Clara County as well because part of Highway 25, of course, is in Santa Clara. From 101 to Hollister, where the bypass is at, and it would stop essentially there. And I have further comments, but that's really the gist of it. Is basically, just in a nutshell, we know there was some history here with this about 10 to 12 years ago. It was kind of at the finish line and got pulled back because of some opposition in South County. The Tourism Advisory Committee decided not to include the South County portion of Highway 25 due to that history and potential opposition with this. And the goal here really is just to promote our county and to highlight that we are home of Pinnacles National Park Highway. I don't know if you have anything further, Supervisor Zenger, since you're also on the committee?
No, it's ended up.
Mr. Chair, I do have comments.
We'll do those after, because I'm, sorry, I was just doing the whole committee. Gracie, are, is Gracie gonna do, there she is, all right. Gracie Rodriguez.
Good afternoon, Chair, Board members and members of the public. This item is before you today, as mentioned, upon recommendation from the Tourism Advisory Committee. There was opposition in the past. However, since we're limiting to a specific segment, there is possibility that we can move forward this initiative. I do want to provide a few comments regarding policies that are in place by the Senate Committee, Senate Transportation Committee and the Assembly Transportation Committee. The policy does state that any renaming of highway segments are after individuals. We are still looking to see if this would be applicable to this since it's not being named after an individual, but after a location, which is Pinnacles National Park. If it is after an individual, the policy does state that it is limited to five miles. However, we have reached out to Caltrans. We have also reached out to the transportation committees to get clarity on this and we are still waiting information. We also have reached out to Santa Clara County to get their input. We have not received a response, but once we receive that response, we will go ahead and provide that to the Board of Supervisors. For today's consideration, there is a letter that will be sent to Senator John Laird as well as Assembly Speaker Rivas. Depending on who the board is interested in carrying this initiative, it does have to be a representative of the region. And as mentioned, there must be no opposition for this initiative to move forward. With that, it is for your board's consideration to adopt the resolution presented today and to provide direction to authorize the chair to sign the letter. If there's any further direction or further amendments to the letter or resolution, please go ahead and provide those to me and we can make those recommendations or those red lines as well. With that, I'd like to turn it over to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment, please?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And in chambers, Elia.
This is a committee that started off as economic development. What we can do for San Bernardino County, and the chair decided to change it to tourism. I don't know how often you go to Pinnacles and, you know, your last excuse is you have a small child and you can't go there. I'm talking to the, to the chair. If you're aware of what goes on in San, at Pinnacles, you're aware that most of the time it gets sold out. People get turned away because there's no parking there. So what you should be concentrating on with regards to the Pinnacle is working with the City of Gilroy, I'm sorry, with the City of Hollister with regards to where can people park so you can get a bus out there so you can have people actually be able to go to Pinnacles without having to be turned around because there's no parking there. That's what you should be concentrating on. That would bring economic development because they would have to park here and they would probably come back hungry or they could have breakfast here and then go on out there. There will be opposition. Nobody that lives on 25, nobody that does business on 25 has been notified of this. The reason why South County was opposed to this is because there's a cost to this, to the residents and the businesses that are along the roadway that you're about to change. And Sylvia's office, or not, Annetta's, she hasn't even been contacted on this. The City of Gilroy hasn't even been contacted on this. And there is going to be a major change right now where there's going to be some closures at the, at the intersection there at 101 and 25 where you can't, you couldn't even put up a sign if you wanted to. But what is the cost visibility? It's like, it's, this is being placed on Santa Clara County. You're going out of your jurisdiction. If this was in San Bernardino County, that's fine, but you still have to talk to and deal with the businesses and the residents that this is going to affect. A business is going to have to change their websites with the name. A business will have to change their letterhead and will have to change their envelopes. There is a cost to this. Again, where's the respect to the community to go out there and reach to them and say, this is an idea we're thinking about? And this is not new. Supervisor Cosmiki, with the very first, one of the very first things when you came onboard as a supervisor was trying to change the name. Now you have three votes up there and you're going to want to do this. How is this so important to bring economic development to San Bernardino County? It's not. This is about, look what I can do and I have the power to do it right now. But do you really have it? I don't think you're gonna be able to succeed with this. And I think if this is so important, this is, the fire department contract is more important than this. And that's what you should be concentrating on.
I have no further public comment.
Bring it back to the, sorry, bring it back to the board for questions. Supervisor Setello?
Thank you. First, I just want to start saying, this might be a really good idea and it might be something that I support in the future. However, at this time, one of my first questions is, has COG had this discussion with the COG board at all? Or is this 100% coming out of the Tourism Advisory Committee? Just, just wondering if COG has had any part in this yet.
I'll take that. Yeah, COG is aware, I brought it up at the COG level as well. So it's something that's.
But have you guys voted on it?
There's been no formal.
Okay. Okay. So I guess I would just ask, I appreciate that you brought it up there. I would ask that COG be the lead, having maybe even a hearing. I definitely don't want to do this until we have the public input and the public has had the opportunity to kind of weigh in on this. I think it's really important that Caltrans present on what renaming the highway would entail and possibly, you know, the cost, all the, all different parts of it. And so I think right now this is just too, too preliminary. I appreciate the idea being brought forward, but I think there's a lot more conversation that needs to happen with the public, with the homeowners, with the business owners. And I really think that the conversation should be happening at the COG level right now. So thank you.
Supervisor Zenger?
Yeah, thank you. Well, as part of the Tourism Committee, I obviously supported this recommendation. But we, I understand that we do need, we need to be on the same page here to really get this done. I'm willing to do whatever is necessary as far as, you know, getting all the input that we need to make sure that we can get this done so that everyone feels comfortable with this. But I do support this. I do think this is extremely, would be extremely beneficial. I think it makes sense. And we did, we did actually have Caltrans at the Tourism Committee and they kind of spoke on some of the costs and the signage. And I don't, I don't have those numbers in front of me and I guess they're not in the staff report. But it wasn't, it wasn't much essentially. It wasn't much. They, there's creative solutions as far as you don't need to replace a sign. You can add things to signs and you just put on top of the existing words. And so there is, there's ways to do it in terms of signage affordably. But that being said, like I said, I support this. I would go forward with this myself, but I'm, like I said, I'm willing to do whatever it takes to get it done so that everyone feels comfortable moving forward.
Supervisor Velazquez?
I have a lot to say on this. How embarrassing is it that we have a national park in our highway, in our county, and we're too embarrassed or ashamed to name a road after it? Because of some crazy information that keeps getting spread out there. And when this first came around, this happened when it became a national park. And this conversation started. And at the time, most of the community was excited about it until misinformation started flowing throughout our community and it's gonna cost so much money to change address labels or, or websites or printing on envelopes. Well, guess what? The city ended up having to do it alone. And everything from San Felipe to Sunset is Pinnacle National Park Highway. Most of those businesses that were gonna be affected have been affected. That change happened a long time ago. So this idea that it's gonna affect all these businesses, absolutely false. The other thing that was false that happened back then is this idea that it's historically known as airline highway. We can't dare mess around with history. Well, a little research and we found out after everything was rejected, actually it was known as Pinnacle Highway until people started calling airline highway because the airline bus ran from San Francisco to LA along that road. And I haven't got a picture of a ribbon cutting with scissors saying Pinnacle Highway. So that's the actual history of it. We have a national park. This, it shouldn't just be from 101 to City of Hollister. This should go from 101 down to the county line. And we should be proud of it. And we should be working not only to change the name, but make it a scenic highway. This is a road, a person said, it's packed, we don't need more people. There's so many people that drive the road because of its beauty. It's like going back in time. It's just an incredibly beautiful road. And we need to work towards the name change and having it classified as a scenic highway is California, one of the few. And I've seen it written up in different articles about how incredibly beautiful this road is and everybody should drive down it. But if we're too embarrassed here to call it Pinnacle National Park Highway, what are we doing? What are we doing to this community? How can we keep going down that path? It's time, we just make a commitment. I get it. Some people still think it's airline highway. No, it's Pinnacle Highway and we should change it. I was, we're gonna adopt it from the 101 to the county line.
Supervisor Curl?
I don't think anybody's embarrassed about Pinnacles.
I know.
I don't think anybody is. But I did do a survey with all of my residents in South County and I thank the Tourism Committee for stopping the renaming at the city line because they've made it perfectly clear to me that they do not want it changed. And I represent them. So I have to go with the will of the people. So I appreciate the Tourism Committee keeping it in North County. I did send this item out, not only on social media, but to all of the representatives that I have emails for in the South County. And the majority of them were like, fine, if this is what you want to spend your money on, they're fine with it. They did want to know the cost, but overall, to keep it out of changing in South County, they weren't gonna oppose it. They were leaving it up to me. So I will support this, but I will never support renaming all the way down because my residents do not want it. And it has nothing to do with being ashamed of Pinnacles. Everyone's proud of Pinnacles. And we're proud of the scenic drive of Highway 25. But why do we have to rename it south of town to get that point across? I think keeping it at the 101 and 25, which will advertise it coming into the community, is fine. So I will support this at this time, but I do have concerns about cost and I do agree that I think COG needs to be more involved.
Supervisor Zenger?
Yeah. Yeah, just a question really quickly. And thank you for that. And we kind of, as you saw, we kind of expected that might be the sentiment in South County a little bit. Out of curiosity, did the residents express reasoning as to the, why they're opposed to the south of town change?
Honestly, the history goes back so far. It's a fight that started, I think, when Supervisor Munzer was on the board. And they've dug in their heels. Why? I can't ask, I can't understand the why behind it. It's a lot of people that have had multiple generations with specific addresses that don't want to change. I have to respect their wishes.
Understood. I was just, I was just, I appreciate that.
But there's no, there's no real foundation except for it was politicized years ago. It was politicized again. South County has, they have a high tolerance of this body. A high tolerance of saying, "Okay, they'll do whatever they want to do and they never think about South County." But this is a hill they'll die on.
And the Spur Hotel?
Mr. Chair, if I can add to it. I was in those conversations, Mr. Zenger, back when this was happening. And the reason, the number one reason first was they had felt it was always been airline highway until we got that information that showed, no, it actually was known as Pinnacles Highway. The number two reason was they feared more traffic. Those were the reasons. And then came, "It's going to cost us money to change our envelopes." So again, we have a national park in our backyard, a place a lot of people love to drive down and see. I get some people might not be happy with the name change. But you know, when you have that park, South Part of Rio County, name the highway after it. How hard is this to figure out?
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate the history lesson. I was actually going to ask if you might clarify for me. So I see on like the signs, it says Pinnacles National Highway, like on the signage. But for all of the businesses that are located within that stretch, they are still all using airline highway. So does it require, by renaming it, does it require you to change address? Or does it not? I'm not too sure. I just looked at, you know, like recent businesses and everybody's still using airline highway. So I just wasn't too sure. Is it something where you can name the highway kind of whatever you want, but addresses would stay the same? I'm just curious if you by chance know.
That's exactly what happened. People realized they didn't have to change their address. It's known as Pinnacles National Park Highway in the city. But most people ended up keeping their same address. And some said, "When they go to do something to change, then they'll change it." Some did, some didn't.
Okay. So is that, well, is that kind of what we're looking at with this? Is that stretch would be homeowners, business owners could keep their current addresses, but just the stretch of the roadway would be considered?
Can I ask a clarifying question too? Just to piggyback. Is airline highway, I thought airline was just the portion from on the south side of 25. It's basically Highway 25, State Road 25, from 101 to Hollister. Then it becomes Pinnacles National Park Highway slash Highway 25. It's always going to be Highway 25, by the way. That's not going away as a designation or an address. And then it's airline highway, I believe, from basically the other side of Hollister to South County.
Correct.
Is that, okay. Just for clarity. Because I, I don't think, yeah, I just, yeah, understood.
Okay, so that stretch that I was just referring to then doesn't essentially have any homeowners or businesses. Am I understanding that correctly then?
No, because we're not proposing to change that portion. The portion that's airline highway, we're not proposing to change.
No, 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 I realize that. But my question really was, on that stretch that the city has already designated, were there any changed addresses? Or is that there, you know, it's kind of, if I'm thinking correctly, there are no homes or businesses that face that street. So there would have been no consideration for addresses that would have maybe need to be changed. Am I understanding that correctly?
No, what you said was correct originally. The name change, they could have changed it to Pinnacles National Park Highway with their addresses. What happened is a lot of people, as time went by, they never changed their addresses and it still is accepted.
So does it go, Pinnacles National Highway within the city goes currently from, let's say, San Felipe to Sunset? Where exactly does it end?
I think it's Sunset. I'm thinking maybe it went to...
Okay, so all of those businesses are all airline highways currently?
Or they can be Pinnacles National Park Highway.
Well, I don't know that any, I mean, I don't know of any business. I mean, I kind of like did a quick Google, like what are addresses? And everything is airline highway. There's none that are Pinnacles. So I guess I would just ask that, like, we delay on this decision today and get some of these, I still would like the public's. I mean, we know how South County feels. How does North County feel about it? And maybe you've reached out, I don't know. But I really think this should be something that goes back to COG. And that is, you have a public hearing with COG and give the community the opportunity to get, you know, provide their input on this. And then how will that affect the homeowners and businesses along Highway 25? That stretch that you're talking about from the 101 to San Felipe? Thank you.
Go ahead, Supervisor Zenger.
Yeah, I'll just say for, so from my, the way I understand it, yeah. Because along that section of 25 that is Pinnacles, the businesses that are there are still airline. At least some of them are. Like I'm doing preliminary search like you. So I guess, I mean, I guess there's not an issue with the post office just forwarding the, it doesn't really matter. I guess they can change the name if they want or they don't have to, which I think is what Supervisor Velazquez was saying. So, because yeah, I think I'm seeing exactly what you're seeing where they don't actually have to change their address. I guess they could or they can leave it.
I just want to get confirmation for sure. I don't want to go on a whim on that.
Can we get clarity from that as one item moving forward? No matter what we do here, if possible. Sorry for throwing stuff at staff on just the postal implications, which sounds funny. I do want to address the, just a few of the comments, the capacity. Because we've talked about these things. We're well aware that Pinnacles is, you know, pretty full and that there's a parking issue and really also a transportation issue. So the goal with this, as is the goal with the potential of branding the community as home of Pinnacles National Park, is to highlight the county, to give us some sort of identity with all these hundreds and thousands and millions of cars driving by on Highway 101 at that key intersection. To spur activity really for other tourism outlets in the community while we work on with Pinnacles, trying to address the parking capacity issue. We've talked about, at the COG level, we've talked also about pursuing funding to try to get some sort of transit that's particularly taking people to and from San Juan and Hollister to the Pinnacles and back as part of the solution. Also looking at just different park and ride options that we might be able to accomplish down the road. So those are all part of the overall picture. The branding of the community and the renaming of the highway is really just to try to highlight something special about our community that we're just not doing at this point. As for concerns about neighbors, our jurisdictional neighbors, that's kind of what we were hoping to do now is to start that process of reaching out and seeing where they're at. As for concerns about cost, I think we're getting further clarification on the mailing part. I will say, because I watched all this debate as well, 10 to 12 or so years ago, is that my perception of what this is, to be really frank, is that, and I respect the opinions. There are some people in this community that just don't like Pinnacles National Park. Let's be honest about it. That's basically what this was. It wasn't about mailing addresses and some grand affinity for airline highway as a name. The airline highway thing was kind of just thrown out at the 11th hour. This thing was actually well on its way to approval. There was pretty broad consensus in the community about this. The supervisor at the time who represented South County, I believe he flew out to Washington and back over the whole thing. And it just kind of blew up at the last minute because of the South County contingent respectfully was against it. And so that's really, I don't actually believe many people are that, care that much about what their mailing addresses. From what I took out of this is this was purely just sort of a disliking of Pinnacles from some people. And it's a small minority of the community, by the way. Just being in the media, I've seen just, when you did anything Pinnacles related, this community is widely, widely supportive of Pinnacles National Park Highway. Just having a national park is a prideful thing for the vast majority. I'd say over 90% of this community loves that we have Pinnacles National Park Highway in this community. You're always going to have some portion of the community that's against everything we do. And so just looking at this, I think we're going to have to put a pause on this and I'll get to why. But just as a broader issue here is, you can nitpick at anything. We're just never going to get anything done here if we're just trying to find reasons to stall and to delay. I have no problem getting more feedback from the community. I do have a pretty good idea where the broader community stands on Pinnacles. I have a good idea where South County stands on Pinnacles, that there's a lot of people in South County that are against renaming the highway and I respect that. And then as far as just going forward, what I was getting at, is this legislative process, you really can't have opposition to it. So if we have, you know, a supervisor, two or three of us that, or, you know, that are against it or want more time, then we have to respect that and take more time or else it's going to inherently fail either way. So I respect, I respect the viewpoints that I'm hearing up here. I would suggest that we continue the item, take a little time. Look at this, have some sort of feedback. I think maybe further discussion on how we get feedback from the community, broad sectors of the community, you know. And then potentially bringing it back during the budget discussion that we're going to have as far as if we have an interest in this. And perhaps that's another platform for people to express whether they like or don't like the idea. Because you will have to put a relatively, I think, small amount of money toward this. So I think that would be the appropriate way to go. I, just with that though, I think we do need to do more to promote local tourism. This seems like a really easy way to do it. It seems to me like this would be a really logical way of gaining attention to all those drivers that are going by, giving ourselves an identity and show pride in who we are here. And I'm hoping that, you know, we do get past this hiccup and that we can look at promoting Pinnacles, renaming the highway. It's just going to take another year because the legislative session, I think we had a May deadline. So it sounds like unless we really push this fast, it doesn't seem logical that maybe we look at the budget and look at it for next year and taking our time with it and coming back then. Any other further thoughts? Supervisor and C.A.O. Ring, go ahead, C.A.U.
Yeah, I just want clarification when you might bring back during budget. Are you looking at just some ideas of money-wise?
Yes, thank you. And if there is, if you can work, I know Gracie's been working on this. If you can collaborate with her on just what some of those relatively nominal amounts may be that would be involved with signage, I think is the main one. And then if we could get clarification on the postal part that was discussed earlier and just the implication so that we can be upfront with the public about that as well. And Supervisor Curl?
I'm just going to piggyback on the postal part because my understanding when this was adopted, it ended at Sunny Slope. That's why they didn't change their business names. It ended right there because all that bypass had no residents on it that were using the address. I think there might have been one ranch that was using it. Also, in speaking with the constituents in South County, especially since we have promoted the low-impact camping, they're very supportive of advertising Pinnacles. They're very supportive of bringing people down to South County. They're also supportive of looking at, you know, could we add small hotels and boutique stop areas where they could bring tourism? So there's a lot, there's a lot in South County that maybe has changed over the years. But especially when you have Pisens Ranch, you've got the whole wine industry. There's so much that they see potential. And I'm very happy that the Tourism Advisory Committee has put Christian from Eden Rift on that committee. It is huge. He is advertising at levels for our community that are unprecedented. I mean, we're in magazines across the country because of him. And so I'm really happy to see that you have recruited him. Kudos to you guys for being able to get him onboard. The other item was, yeah, just verifying with the post office. I believe it ends at Sunny Slope. And I do, I just want to say to the Tourism Advisory Committee, I really appreciate not going into South County at this time.
Further, Supervisor Zenger?
Just really, really briefly, just because we're talking about capacity at the Pinnacles. We're talking about weekend capacity, but it's, I don't believe we're at full capacity every day of the year, all seasons during the week. So there is, there is room. So just for the record, and we are, not to mention we're working on all the alternatives, busing and parking lot, and we're really working on that as well. But I'll just say that there is, there is more potential than there is.
Can I add? Because you just triggered from when we were in DC at NACO and we met with Congresswoman Zoe Lofgren. I would highly recommend the chair contacted her directly and her staff. Because her first comment about a bus or any transit from Hollister was not favorable. So I would try and sway her. And I think with the passion that you have in this, you could probably do that. But that was her instant reaction. And I just sat there and was like, "Okay, I'm not going to say anything." Take it away, Dom.
Yeah, well, that's to say she was supportive of more parking. Not she didn't want it, she was just not, she just didn't like the idea. She didn't think people would like a bus because they probably wouldn't as much as more parking, so.
Or a combination of park and ride where you have a parking area that's relatively close to Pinnacles might be more amenable, but...
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say, and you kind of made mention to a lot of, the property owners now are realizing potential because of the park. So there is a change, a mindset change of, hey, maybe we could benefit from this. And I think there are still people that are not happy with it. But I think there's a lot more people now that are looking at, maybe I can set up something on my property, have campers come in. So maybe what we should be doing is sending letters out to those along, whatever road we're going to call it right now, and see what their opinions are, what their views are. And the questioner should ask, "Are you interested in doing more with your property for tourism? Are you looking for this?" So we're getting information because that's what we want. And if this person is advertising as much as they are, that's exactly what starts triggering more people to start investing in their properties, providing lodging. More people are providing lodging, more people are eating. It just starts feeding on itself. That's when you win. And we have to break past the old mindset of, well, they didn't like it back then. You know, I know it's hard, but it's, we should be doing our part if we're going to make that change. I think we can be very successful.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I just want to piggyback on that and also reminding that anything that we can do when we're talking about the general plan amendments to streamline processes that would promote the hospitality industry, that would reduce the amount of sequoia cost in EIR reports, those are the kind of things that South County residents are really talking about. The hurdles it takes to do something in South County for a tourism-based conversation. At the same time, always reassuring our old airline highway residents that that's a different road. Old airline highway is old airline highway. We would not be changing old airline highway to Pinnacles National Park Highway. So making sure that they understand there's a difference between Highway 25 and old airline highway and ensuring them that they would not be changing their addresses will also be beneficial.
Great. And I'll just say, you know, we have this incredible asset in the community. I think it's our signature asset that we have here as an attraction. And it seems like a no-brainer that we need to do more to promote who we are and what this place is. And I'm hopeful that by this time next year, we can get past this part and get some more feedback and get a letter out and start the process next year. That would be my suggestion unless there's somebody else that has anything further. Do we need to vote on that or is that just consensus? Seems like we have consensus there. We did go to public comments, so I believe that would complete that item. That would complete regular agenda. And that would take us to future agenda items, discuss and approve future agenda items. And I do not believe we have any new future agenda items. Does anybody have any thoughts or comments on existing future agenda items? Hearing none, do we have any public comment on future agenda items?
I'd like to make a comment in chambers. Please provide a speaker card on Zoom. Please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Thank you very much. That brings us to adjournment. Take care.